Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the, I guess this is the 21st of August, regular meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council. We'll ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Gatewood is joining us virtually at a location that has been agendized on the agenda. Thank you for joining us, Councilmember Gatewood. Councilmember Terry, Councilmember Pulapati, Vice Mayor Sander, Mayor Budge.
Here, thank you. Stacy, will you read all of the TV and legal announcements, please?
Yes. The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will replay on Wednesday, July 23rd at 6:00 PM, which I know is in air now that I'm looking at this. So I'm going to guess that that is August 23rd at 6:00 PM, and Tuesday, August 29th at 9:00 AM. The meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable/14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you, Stacy. We're going to start tonight, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance and an invocation. We invite you to stay standing for our invocation by Dr. Dan DeShong from River City Christian Church, and our Pledge of Allegiance tonight will be led by Mark Saposnick from the Rancho Cordova Travel Agency.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mark. Dr. Dan.
Please join me in prayer. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for our city leaders at every level in our city, our staff, and all that work to serve our community. We ask that you give them grace to bring truth, justice, and stability to our region. Give them power to do what's right and to rule in fairness. We ask you to fill our city, state, and national political leaders with wisdom, understanding, discernment, and knowledge. Grant them favor, increase their faith, prepare them to pursue your excellence. To the citizens...
Dr. Dan, we can't hear you. Sorry.
Okay. To the citizenry, may it be your will, Lord, that all of us, leaders and citizens alike, come together to replace division with unity, violence with peace, hatred and bigotry with love and true equality, insult and contempt with civility and respect, remove selfish pursuits, and cause us to be devoted to the needs of all. You give us two jobs, to love the Lord your God with all your heart, mind, soul, and strength, and to love one another. We ask all this in the name of our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Thank you for your message, Dr. Dan. So tonight, we have two presentations, and the first one is something that we really enjoy doing, especially given the previous message. And I'm going to turn it over to our HR director, who will talk about employees who have reached a milestone in the city life.
Thank you, Mayor Budge and councilmembers. As Brenda Roach, Human Resources Manager for the city, I have the esteemed honor to recognize four key members of our staff who have reached large milestones here at the city. And so we want to take the time to celebrate and recognize those staff for all of their contributions that they have made here in the city of Rancho Cordova. So first, I'd like to recognize Crystal Judisch. She's celebrating 10 years here with the city. Crystal started her career at the city as a contractor and with the Neighborhood Services and Public Works Department, providing customer service to support staff back in 2013. In January of 2014, Crystal officially joined our city family as a customer service representative for Neighborhood Services. Crystal spent over a year learning the ins and outs of animal services, and she was promoted to an Animal Service Officer 1 after applying in April of 2015. Crystal worked hard on her professional development to become a nationally certified animal control officer, served on the Animal Cruelty Unit and Task Force, investigated hundreds of cases, and successfully worked with the district attorney office to prosecute several felony and misdemeanor charges, and participated in community events including trunk or treat, meet the machines, doggy in the park, and career day at local schools. In October of 2021, Crystal applied and was promoted to operations and maintenance technician for our Public Works Department, and she is currently supporting that division. Other career highlights that Crystal is most proud of include her participation in the Great American Triathlon, also formerly known as Epi's Great Race. And in 2013, Crystal was incremental in recruiting staff. She organized the logistics for several of our teams, and even participated in the entire triathlon herself. Thank you, Crystal, for your dedication to your fellow team members and for your dedication to making the city a great place to live, work, learn, and play. If you would like to come up here, please, I'd like to present you with your...
Black.
You're welcome. Do you like to say anything?
Good evening, council, mayor. Thank you. It's been a pleasure. It's been a journey. Ten years. So, thank you.
I think I photobombed that one, by the way. It's perfectly lined up.
Thank you.
I remember you used to scoot away.
The next individual I'd like to recognize is Stacy Delaney. Stacy Delaney is celebrating 15 years with the city of Rancho Cordova. She's been serving the city in the city manager's office under the Community Enhancement and Investment Fund Division for the past 15 years. Stacy is proud that not only did she grow up in Rancho Cordova and continues to call Rancho Cordova home, but she's also proud to see the various changes before cityhood and now 20 years after, and the accomplishments that the city has made. She is honored that first and foremost, she's been able to serve her hometown, and her memories and accomplishments within the years attest to her dedication to the community. Some of her favorite career highlights include the following. Working for an organization that values giving back and making a difference, encouraging us to form teams and make a positive impact, such as our cancer crusher team that raised funds for the American Cancer Society Relay for Life for Rancho Cordova. Leading the Memorial and Veterans Day events for the city for nearly a decade and seeing it grow over the years. Becoming a Vietnam War commemorative partner so the city and our partner organizations can thank and honor our Vietnam veterans and their families. Getting to develop the Community Enhancement and Investment Fund from ground up and seeing the positive impact made throughout the city. When she first saw the Community Enhancement Investment Fund project came to fruition, she got the opportunity to see the look of amazement on the faces of the students when they unveiled the grand pianos at Cordova High School, and it was an awesome experience. She has an opportunity to play a small role in the blossoming of the arts in here in the city. She also got to work with Ferson Lake College to launch the Promise Program in Rancho Cordova, giving students the opportunity to go to college for the first two years for free. And lastly, she got to figure out how to move a donated hammer cage from Sacramento State College University to Cordova High School in a matter of weeks, which became the impetus for other track and field facilities being added, like the steeplechase pit. She's excited to see what the next five years have in store and continue to be part of the city team. Thank you, Stacy, for your years of service promoting and helping build our city to what it is that many people now call home. Would you please come up here and share any comments?
Thank you, mayor and council. If you would have asked me even 15 years ago, I didn't necessarily think of working for the city, but I should really thank my mother because she's the one who saw the advertisement in the Sacramento Bee 15-plus years ago. I should also thank Stacy Leitner because she was the original person who hired me. So it's really been an amazing 15 years. Thinking back to my days at Cordova, for instance, I went to school with Linda Budge's son. So who would have known, you know, all these years later, that I'd be standing here today? But I am very proud to serve my hometown, and hopefully it shows.
Is moving a hammer cage actually on the plaque?
It should be, yes.
Because, you know, that's so common. All of us have that on our resumes, right?
Yeah, right. Cordova grads are taking over, guys.
That's right. Thank you so much.
Next, I'd like to honor Howard Williams. He has served 20 years for the city. Don't see Howard here today, but just to recognize Howard, he started his career at the city as a contractor, and he assisted the city with building, our permitting, and building inspection services. Howard has since transitioned to a full-time staff member and currently serves as the Building Inspector Supervisor for the Building and Safety Division. Over the years, Howard has developed many positive working relationships with our development community and continues to deliver exceptional customer service with his collaborative approach. Thank you, Howard, for your 20 years of service to the city of Rancho Cordova community and serving as a mentor to your fellow colleagues. So I will be sure to give Howard his plaque. And then last but not least, I would like to recognize my fellow colleague, Lisa Brown. Lisa is getting recognized for, again, another 20 years of service here at the city of Rancho Cordova. She grew up in a small town in Northern California, and she has always appreciated the sense of community and has found that working, that same sense of community working here for the city of Rancho Cordova. Here are a few of her career highlights for her 20 years of service. She's had the great opportunity of being part of a dynamic HR department that has successfully recruited and onboarded top talents for all positions within the organization over the past 20 years. She has built positive relationships with employees to foster a collaborative and healthy work environment, getting to know each employee during their journey at the city. She's provided opportunities for our youth through various programs like Summer at City Hall, City Semester Internship Program, and our Pride Scholarship for graduating seniors in Rancho Cordova. And lastly, and I think most importantly, she has helped shape and maintain the organization's culture in ensuring that it lines with our city values. So Lisa, if you'd like to come up here, please.
Please, I'll take the photo. Let's see this one. Good evening. I'm a woman of very limited words. My husband always says, "You give the Cliff Note version," and he gives all the details. So anyways, I just want to take this opportunity to thank all of you. This has been an incredible journey. I feel so fortunate to have worked here for 20 years and hopefully many more to come. I still have the energy, I still have the passion, and I still have that sense of community that I have found to love from my hometown up in Redding. And it's amazing to look back and see over the 20 years what has been accomplished. I drive down Folsom Boulevard, and my mouth drops every time I drive down Folsom. I walk into this building with a smile and am so glad to be an employee of the city of Rancho Cordova. I share with my colleagues how proud I am to work here, and going to other associations or conferences and hearing from others about their cities, their employers, it's an honor. I am so blessed, and thank you. I'm happy to serve.
Micah, I forgot you weren't sitting here, and I didn't give you an opportunity to provide any commentary. Would you like to share any words?
Sure. Thanks, Brenda. I just wish I could be there in person to celebrate and congratulate those who've spent so many years with us at the city of Rancho Cordova. And really, it's important to honor those individuals who have spent so much time building the city and working on bringing new and great things to the community, and really wish I could be there in person to celebrate. But unfortunately, I'm remote tonight, dropping my daughter off at college today. And so I really appreciate kind of the opportunity. And really, the other thing I want to highlight is, we have a couple of, I think, members on the dais who have been here for 20 years, too. So I think with Mayor Budge and Vice Mayor Sander and our city attorney, Adam Lindgren, are also celebrating their 20 years with us. So I think that's an important thing to acknowledge, and it helps us with our continuity and our consistency. And so congratulations to all of you as well in that recognition. So, appreciate it.
Thank you, Micah. And I would tell, Howard is one of these people that we knew from Sacramento County before he came to work at the city and as a contractor. And if you want to know anything, if you have any kind of questions about your house, or how to fix something, or how to resolve something, you want to talk to Howard. He just knows everything there is to know about residential construction. So even though he's not here tonight, we want to make sure he gets appropriate recognition. Okay, now, we're going to turn it over to Mark Saposnick for a Visit Rancho Cordova Annual Report. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you, Mayor Budge. Thank you, Vice Mayor Sander, and councilmembers Pulapati and Donald Terry here. I'm glad to be here with you tonight to share a little bit about what we've been up to over the past year and what we're looking at going forward as well. But before I say that, I do want to just mention, based on the previous act here, this is incredible to have a city with so many long-term employees. I mean, that's really, really says a lot. So anyhow, just want to comment, great job both on the council and on the city side for retaining people and keeping them involved. This is really great. Okay, I have a copy of the report that has been handed out, I believe, and we also have visitor's guides, I think, that went around, the exploration guide that we've been handing out to our visitors here that come into the city. And to kick it off, we really, over the past year, it's been a good year for tourism, despite all of the stuff happening out in the economy, the concerns, you know, about recession and all of that. People have been still motivated to travel, and we benefited from that, absolutely. If you look back, you know, through the pandemic and pre-pandemic, we had so many business travelers here in our market. We flipped that over, and we've got like 80% leisure travelers in our market these days. It's pretty incredible that we made that switch, but really happy because it's kept our hotels full, our restaurants full, gas stations busy, and so forth, and all of the activity centers that we have here, too, that we promote, Beryl District and otherwise. So lots of good things happening on that front. In the past fiscal year, we generated, or tourism in Rancho Cordova generated over $300 million in economic impact, and that is a higher number than we had pre-pandemic. It's not all the inflation. I'm going to be honest, though, inflation played a role in the amount of spend that people have these days. But overall, we saw some really good growth in terms of rate and occupancy. And so we're looking good in terms of where we're at right now, and all stats are showing to continued good forecasts for travel in our community for the next year as well. We do have the new hotel that we celebrated the other day. That's great to have that up in line, the Marriott Town Place Suites. And we lost one, unfortunately, over the past year or two with the Doubletree. So we kind of leveled out our room nights a little bit based on, you know, those two properties, canceling one another out. But we do know there is a future project coming here to Rancho Cordova. I believe the planning commission's going to be looking at this very soon for a height house property with 112 rooms. We're very excited about the prospect of that coming to town as well. So to get into the marketing that we did over the past year, we really focused on refreshing our website. We launched a new brand that we'd put a lot of time and effort into. We had done some studies with both residents and travelers to really identify, you know, what are the key assets that people really key into when they're here. And so we created a whole new brand that really better identifies how we can convey our messaging about our diversity to the travelers that are coming into our destination. We reignited our Google campaigns and generated over 40 million positive impressions of Rancho Cordova over the past year. We've launched campaigns with Expedia that drove a lot of awareness about our destination, but more importantly, just flat-out generated about 6,000 room nights, which was a nice addition to have in our city as well. And then we're working on updating some of the programs that you know about and that we've had for a little while, like Hometown for the Holidays, and some of our social media campaigns and so forth. We're revamping some of those this year, so stay tuned. Our marketing team has some really fun stuff coming up soon. Social media's still been a big place for us to be, and we did add one other element to our website this year that's been really a benefit to enhancing the exposure for some of our businesses in the community. We added a product called Ripe, but what it does is allows people to book a hotel room, and at the same time, to book an activity and pay for it all at that time, have it all done. And then when they get here, they're already set for that activity. It's already prepaid and everything. So we launched that a little bit earlier this year, and we're seeing some really great results from that. We're very excited about what that will do for us over time. We've had videos taken of a lot of our assets, including hotels and the Beryl District establishments, some of the key restaurants, some of our key activity centers. And those videos have received over 1 million views on Google over the past year. So that's all good stuff to get the exposure out about the city and what we have here. And then we've had a real PR push over the last year as well, and excited to say that we acquired some international media for the destination. We had a great piece in Food and Travel Magazine out of Mexico, 10-page spread, and it really had a lot of highlights here. A lot of our restaurants were highlighted and so forth right here in Rancho Cordova. So that was kind of a pretty cool thing to have happen. But we've have a lot of other media that we're starting to stir up, too, and just brought our agency, Madden Media Board, to handle some additional PR, which they'll have visitors from different media coming within the next month or two. So good things happening on that front. Yeah, on the annual report slide here, one of the things I wanted to showcase is that, on the sales side, we had our sales team, which is relatively new. We've only had our sales team in place for a little over a year. They generate over 45,000 room nights. The value of that business into our community is about $16 million. So this is just one example of the building blocks that we're utilizing to kind of drive more economic impact into the city. And really happy that that increase in room nights was substantial. Again, we hardly had a sales team in place before that or a department, and what they've been able to do in a short period of time resulted in like 900% growth in terms of room nights generated by our organization into the city. So that was, you know, one exciting element that we had there, too. Also wanted to mention, you know, we worked with plenty of events again this year. We had, we're working on some big growing events to bring some of those back. Those were here pre-pandemic, and we're working on some of those really, really big collegiate events that come through. And I think that we'll, you know, hopefully we'll have some more news on that within the next few months, but working hard on that front. And there's a whole host of other events, obviously, you know, the cycling events, the airshow that's coming up. And speaking of the airshow, one of the things that we did over this past year is that with the help of the city, we worked to promote the Beryl District, and we were able to generate a ton of exposure for the Beryl District over the course of that promotion. But one of the great things that's come out of it, too, is that airshow is working with our Beryl District partners. And this year at the airshow, they'll have what is called the hangar, and it's going to be a premium venue for these, for all of our purveyors from the Beryl District to be able to get out there, pour, and have, create a premium experience for 500 people per day. So we're really excited to get that exposure for the Beryl District. Very, you know, as a member of the California Capital Air Show Board, I'm very proud of that, and great to have, you know, we always want it to benefit our local community as much as possible, and this is one way it's definitely going to do that. So very happy about that, that we have going on there. You know, of course, we continue many partnerships. We work closely with Chamber and CCC, the California Capitol Film Office. We partner with the city on that. And so we are contributing funds so that we get, you know, great documentary film festivals happening here. But hopefully, other film productions are coming into town as well with the contributions that we've made on that front. So very excited about that. And we do work with the Children's Museum, Black Chamber, Hispanic Chamber, LGBTQ Center, Sac State University. We have a new program with them. So lots of, we're out involved in many communities that are important to Rancho Cordova. Let's see here. And then I wanted to say before I wrap it up, you know, next year, we're looking at, we had a $2.6 million budget. If you look back like five years, we were like in the $500,000 range, and that has a lot to do with the confidence that our hotels have in our ability to generate more room nights. And so they've been, they upped our, we went through a renewal, and they upped our fees, the T-bid fees. And so we've been able to take our budget from something that was around 500,000, now it's 2.6 million. So a big difference, and we're able to do so much more. We have seven full-time employees now. Two of them here, by the way. Don and Aubrey are here in the audience, so appreciate that. And then, yeah, for next year, you're going to see, again, a big chunk of the budget going to sales and marketing to drive even more business. Inside of the actual annual report, there's a list of the places that we're going to be nationally and internationally. And so we look forward to another good year coming up next year as well. So with that, I just want to say thank you so much. And again, did want to mention about the Hotel Watch Program. We have Police Chief Brandon Luke in the back here, and the police have been incredibly supportive of our community and our industry, and we really appreciate that. And so didn't want that to go without notice before I depart today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Questions or comments for Mark?
I would just start with, when I got on this council, before you were ever here, we had a unique relationship, I would say, with the Visitors Bureau, and not in a good way. Projects that didn't work, things that were tried and ultimately didn't pan out the way that we had hoped. You've done a fantastic job of reimagining what this organization is and can do. I think, you know, even during kind of the depths of the COVID pandemic, the one bright spot in hospitality was the performance of our hotels here, for a whole host of different reasons. Some were government contracts that we had, some of it was CalOES and other things like that. But that, when any story that you saw about hospitality anywhere in this country was only negative, we were still getting positive press in some way. So thank you to you and your entire board and everybody that's kind of come together. And I know we've been part of, you know, trying to land NBA, All-Star Games, and a lot of other things. And to do that, they had to count our hotels even out here to make some of those things work. And so, you know, but kudos to you and your entire organization for what it was when I got here 11 years ago to what you built it to, and you and your team has built it to today. So congratulations, and thank you for your work. So congratulations, and thank you for your work.
Yeah, thank you. I really appreciate those kind words. And really, all the credit goes to the team. It's a total team effort.
I think you hired some of them, so you can take some credit.
I take that credit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Siri?
Yeah.
So I think Councilmember Terry captured it right. You know, you reimagined a lot of ideas. And so your creative ideas do show from you and your team, and that is what I've seen in the few years that I've been on council. So you've bought it to new heights, and we're looking forward to see what more you can do. Thank you.
Thank you.
David?
Thanks for coming on, Mark. I appreciate the the report. I was actually at the airport last night about 1:00 in the morning, waiting for my luggage. And I was looking for these sorts of, just out of happenstance, was at the welcome booth at the airport and looked at these brochures that were there. This is not the one we have out there now, by the way. I don't know how long this one's been around. But ours there just lists like hotels. It says Rancho on one side and hotels list on the other. So I'm glad to see we're upgrading to this.
We are, and we delivered those particular items so that they will be displayed in the airport within the next couple of days. So, yeah, that already went out. But, yeah.
So my timing was just perfect.
It is, yeah.
To catch the old one.
To catch the old one.
All the other communities had pretty dynamic stuff there, and we had a list of hotels. I was just like, hmm.
We could, yeah, we can do better.
Oh, and the the Where to Eat button here goes to a contact page. It doesn't go to Where to Eat, so somebody on your staff needs to tune that up.
Thank you.
I just noticed that. And the last question I've got is sports commission stuff. So you mentioned the big events that used to happen here. I guess that's what, rowing, things that happened at Lake Natoma, right?
Yeah.
And so your interest is in getting those back. And the Sacramento Sports Commission has traditionally done that. And as, I am not an expert on this, but as I understand it, they're they're an entity associated with the City of Sacramento. So a number of years ago, Donald, you know, that was our convention of Visitors Bureau downtown. And what would happen is all the dollars here would get generated, sent to downtown, spent downtown for the benefit of downtown. They'd do a big event. They wouldn't even list our hotels. That kind of craziness was going on. So we created our own, you know, and we've seen a lot of growth and potential as a result. But I'm curious as to how now that we're separate, we're going to influence, like what the Sports Commission might have to be engaged in recruiting.
Yeah, you know, over the years, we've taken the role of providing those sponsorships directly. So we've been working with US Rowing or NCAA, Pac-12, and all of those groups. And we have the contacts now that we are working with them directly on trying to bring these these potential, you know, big events into into Lake Natoma and the Sacramento State Aquatic Center. So, yeah, it's a, we're in a different position than we were in the past. We definitely, you know, we communicate with the Sports Commission, but in terms of like bringing these types of events between what we can do in partnership with Folsom, in terms of the dollars that it takes to bring them out, we're in a position to be able to do it now. So, yeah, so we're working directly on those things.
So there is an active partnership with Folsom?
Yes.
To do those?
Yes.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Do you have a list somewhere of events that you have recruited and brought to Rancho Cordova? Because I don't know if I've seen that.
Yes, we do. So we can provide that to you. Absolutely. Yeah, we have a whole host of things that we've brought over the years.
All right, very good. And I know there's a calendar that was associated with this. Hopefully, you have a lot of the creative Cordova Community Council stuff on there.
Of course, we always are promoting what the Cordova Community Council is doing.
Concerts in the park and that sort of thing.
Yep, we do all of that. It's a really important thing. In the past year or two, we had quite a presence out there. We always had a booth at these events that were taking place, whether it be concerts in the park or, yeah, some of the other events. Obviously, the bigger events, we have a presence there as well. But even for the smaller events, we felt it was important to get in front of the community. And I think that paid off, too, because when we did a resident survey, 63% of the residents know about Visit Rancho Cordova and the work we're doing, which I thought was a pretty high number. But, yeah, we absolutely want to be promoting that. And it's a great, you know, a great asset to have for for our community first, but then also for visitors into our area, too. We know that people, when they come into a hotel, they may be looking for something to do, and it's great to be able to say, oh, right down the street, you've got something really fun to do tonight. And so, yeah.
That's ideal.
We hope about that. Yeah.
All right, thank you, Mark.
Sure, thank you.
Garrett in Nashville?
Yes, I am. Yes, I am.
You have any comments for Mark?
You guys do.
Unmute. You muted.
You guys do a great job.
Thank you, Garrett.
Thanks, Garrett. Micah in the Ethernet somewhere.
No, I think appreciate the partnership with with Visit and look forward to continued support and efforts in making Rancho Cordova, you know, a name for itself in this area.
Great, thank you, Micah. Mark, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
This is terrific.
Take care.
Okay, we'll move to public comment. Citizens wishing to address the board on an item that is not on the agenda are welcome to do so at this point in time. You will have three minutes. Please state your name and your community of residence, and remember that we are not allowed to take action on an item that is brought off agenda tonight, but we will certainly put you in touch with staff or schedule something on a future agenda if necessary. Stacy, do we have anybody signed up?
We do, but first I'd like to just share the instructions, if you're joining us by Zoom or by telephone.
Oh, please, thank you.
If you want to make a public comment via teleconference, please use the raise hand feature available in Zoom at the bottom center of the screen. And if you are participating by telephone and you'd like to make a public comment, please press the asterisk nine to raise your hand. And then just please go ahead and wait until I call upon you, and then we will take your public comment. We'll start with those speaker cards that I have received from those in the council chambers. We'll start with Helen Wayland-Bach, following Helen will be Tara Colvin-Bach, and then Larry Ladd. And then I will go to those who raised their hands in Zoom or telephone.
Great. Welcome, Helen.
Helen, you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
I don't know how to spell it. Well, and not Waylon like Waylon Jennings. Hi, my name is Helen Wayland-Bach, and I'm from the Tiffany area. Several things I'd like to talk about is 90 days ago, I contacted the city regarding weed abatement along the American River. The fact that there was, they were cutting over three-foot-tall grass and leaving it on the ground. I was assured that somebody would get back to me and this issue would be resolved. I've had various conversations with different members of the staff, and everybody keeps deflecting it. Then I attended a event in another area of town, and I talked to the Metro Fire, and they told me the grass should have been picked up. So my question is, for everybody to think about this, is why has it taken me over 90 days and not had a resolve? We still have the grass on the ground, and the grass was cut during nesting period. And the same day that grass was cut, a bird flew out of the orchard because her nest had been disturbed near the elderberry bushes that were whacked down. So, you know, I find it a little bit disheartening that the staff seems to be favoring the builder because nothing's happened with it. But yet you look at the property between the canal, which is a substation, the canal, you have a vacant lot behind a wrought iron fence, and you have the care facility. That piece of ground is owned by the Cassis. That piece of ground is cut to the ground. My question is, why has the city not done anything about the grass and endangered the residents along Tiffany West, who abut to the orchard to allow that grass to be down? The other area I'd like to talk about is, prior to these meetings, we get, we, the citizens on Friday get slapped with several hundred pages of documents to read. My question is, how do we know every one of the council people who are making decisions on these items have actually read the items? I find it to be you're jumping, clumping too much stuff in that you're voting on, and I don't really think that the council people have actually read all the 400, 800-page documents. I just find it's too much because the citizens spend their whole weekend dedicated to reading documents. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Tara? By the way, Helen, the parcel that you talked about is not in the city limits. The canal, the canal is the city limit. No, thank you. Tara?
Good evening. This is Tara Colvin-Bach. I live in Stone Creek and mayor, vice mayor, council members. I just want to apologize for some omission that I had when I spoke earlier about the districting, because I've been here to many council meetings, and I see that you have a diverse view of what's happening, that you've not only lived where you live now, but you've lived in different parts of Rancho Cordova. And I really have seen decisions made for the benefit of all. I do not think that there is, like, not representation in certain areas, because I think anybody who speaks up to you, you do listen to them. So I just want to thank you for all your efforts on this. Now, districting, I tried to use that online thing, and I don't know, I think I know a little bit about that stuff. I don't know. It was really hard to come up with things. It kept saying not meets, not meets, didn't tell me why. And I was really concerned about people who are not, English isn't their first language. How could they possibly even use that tool? And I was thinking also, it's sort of an embarrassment, because California is the biggest state or one of the biggest states, and we don't have a tool that's user-friendly? I don't know. It just didn't sound right to me. And so I just wanted to let you know that that's how I felt about everything, and I just want to thank you guys.
Thank you, Tara. Larry?
Hey.
Welcome, Larry.
Thank you, thank you, Linda. I'm here in my capacity as one of the people who helped create the city in the first place, and specifically to respond to a request for for names that Siri put out on Facebook about longtime Rancho Cordova residents that should be honored by streets or places or something like that. And we talked about Leonard Yates, the American Legion chapter here because of his time as a Tuskegee mechanic. But I came up with another name that is, in my opinion, the most unsung hero for the creation of this city, and that was Leroy Fouse, who you probably, most of you have not heard of. But, I mean, the biggest barrier to creating this city was getting the signatures in, because the turnover at Rancho Cordova was so high, there were so many people who were registered to vote, who had left, that getting that percent was the biggest hurdle, even more than the $200,000. And Dave Roberts and Leroy Fouse knocked on every door in this town. And, you know, McGarvie has a school named after him, and I had a little bit to do with that initially. And Dave Roberts has a park. But my personal opinion is there should be some thanks to Leroy Fouse, you know, the common man who worked really hard to put you guys where you are today.
Thanks, Larry.
Excellent comment, Larry.
Next?
Next, I'm going to go to Zoom and James Garcia. I see that your hand is raised. I'm going to go ahead and unmute you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Welcome, James.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Oh, perfect, great. Oh, I'm James Garcia, member of Stone Creek neighborhood. I also wanted to talk about the maps. I found it actually pretty easy to use as a tech person. You could easily break things down, submit things. I just felt, though, that the council should have made a decision about the number of districts a lot sooner. There was enough public demand and outcry that wanted to have five districts, and by not making the decision, we were only able to come up with whatever we wanted. And there were many people that wanted the five district maps that could not know how to make it. Others were able to use the same maps that some people provided. They even signed petitions in order to establish themselves as wanting a five district map. It just would have been really helpful if the council would have decided sooner, as opposed to now, the deadline was last Friday on the 18th, and the maps aren't going to be released until tomorrow, the 22nd. Then we have one more week to see all of those maps. Just felt that it was kind of a disservice to the community to not make a decision on your part, even with having remote council members' presentation on it, still could have had that that decision. So I just felt that that was necessary to be frank. So, thank you, though.
Thank you, James.
James has his hand raised again, but I'm sure that that's not intentional, but he might have somebody else with him. Okay, no, he's lowered it. All right. The city clerk's also, city clerk's office also received email via public comment via email, and those came from Fiza Mughal, Nicholas Lebowski, Priscilla Boyd, Christopher LaCombe, Brenda Gustin, and Valerie Knippschild.
Thank you. Okay, then we will move on to council comments.
I'll start out first with thanking staff and our PD and everybody else in the community that had a hand in the national night out. For the first time in a long time, it wasn't 110 that night. It was still warm, but it wasn't 110 like it was last year. So it was actually a fairly pleasant evening to be out. I got to four stops, Lincoln Village, Sun River, and a couple, I think I started in Anatolia and ended in Anatolia. I think I did pretty much as many miles as you could do and stay within the city and go to different places, because I started in Anatolia, went up to Sun River, out to Lincoln Village, back to Anatolia. And so my average stop was about seven minutes, and I had about 18 minutes of driving in between each stop for my 30-minute timeframe that we had. But it was really great. Had some good food, had some good conversations, and I appreciate the staff that joined me on our little cohort as we jumped around the town. And here's something I wouldn't do every day, but yesterday was my good friend and ALF classmates' birthday, Jim Tabucci, and he held it at the Mandarin Center that is in Rancho Cordova, for those of you who haven't been to it. And the interesting thing was, everybody that that we knew together, he was telling the story about how that facility came to be and the fact that they were over off of Micron, no, Micron, I think, over there, or was it Mayhew? And they were looking to buy a bingo hall somewhere, and we had this moratorium on new bingo halls. And it was actually during our ALF Wilderness Retreat, which was eight years ago this past weekend, that he started chatting with me about, you know, we'd really like to buy a smaller and, you know, light industrial building and do something special in Rancho Cordova. There were hundreds of people that came to his birthday yesterday. It was catered and whatnot. And for those of you who haven't been to the facility, it's one of the biggest meeting spaces that we have in the city now. They have a commercial kitchen that they ran great plates through for the city throughout COVID, and they've used it to host all kinds of different community events, including bingos on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays, if anybody wants to go over there. And it's just across from J.J. Pfister's Distillery, and you can see it from the highway. But it's just really amazing, and, you know, I love Jim. He turned 60, and happy birthday, Jim, again. But what that place has become for the, for that community and for that music community, and to bring that, David, it was kind of the, you know, one of those examples that we talked years ago about, like, and again, they weren't in crisis, but we talked about, if there's ever this nonprofit that we could ever, like, lure to the city in some way and work with, and we didn't have to give them funding, and we do now, but, but the fact that they built that facility and what we just saw as a bingo hall has really turned into a really amazing community center for a lot of people. And frankly, I haven't been there, I think, since COVID. And just to see the number of people that showed up just for a birthday party was, and it's Jim, so of course, people are going to show up for his birthday. But wanted to throw that out there. I did attend a Los, I don't know if I necessarily need to report this under the city, but we do work with them. So I'm on the Los Rios Colleges Foundation Board, and I attended my first finance committee meeting, where we went over the endowment and a lot of other stuff and around the economy and kind of what they're they're doing with that. But, you know, kudos again to our our great Promise Program that Stacy Delaney somewhere is probably back in her office manages well for us, along with Randy K. And then lastly, I will just say, it is not the fall yet, but for some reason, we are already playing soccer in this town. And there was a massive jamboree over the weekend for most of the younger kids, and it went really well. And for those of you who haven't been in a while, they moved around where all of the kids play and what fields are where. So if you're trying to find your grandkids or your kids or any of those other games and you're used to how it was last year, it's completely different. So there was a lot of questions as to what fields were numbered what, and they've changed everything, so. But luckily, it hasn't But luckily, it hasn't been too hot yet, but soccer has begun. Summer, summer is officially over for most of us.
Garrett, are you still there? There you are.
I'm here. All right, let's get into this. So, first of all, I went to the region business dinner. And it was amazing. And it was great to see all those people, and I'm glad to see that business. And I think Josh, or Luke Woods, is going to be an amazing individual. Hold on a second, guys. And then also.
At Sac State.
I was able to do, of course, the National Night Out. I went to as many places as Donald went to. Because it was great to see all those individuals. Everyone's engaged. Everyone's excited about redistricting. And I tried to encourage as many people as possible to show up at the events with us. It's great to have Donald being the soccer coach for our kids. We expect nothing but wins this year. That's how we do it in Rancho. Whipping up on all the Folsom teams. And, let's see. And last but not least, where was it? I think that's it. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thanks, Garrett. Siri?
Thank you, Mayor. I thought we covered National Night Out last time, but, you know, we visited various neighborhoods during National Night Out. Thank you to our C P D. They were there at every place that we went to ahead of us, so we were good there. It was really nice to see everybody coming out, sharing stories. I mean, help build better connections and understand what's happening in the neighborhoods. The other thing that we attended last Friday was the Cordova Community Council Luncheon. We'd had the fifth district supervisor, Pat Hume. It was a full house, and he spoke about his priorities, about safer neighborhoods, and how he's going to support local businesses. So he's pretty much tied in to what the city needs. So that was a pretty good turnout at the luncheon here at City Hall. Then council member Sandra and I met with Senator Roger Nilo, and we talked about local topics. You know, from boosting economic development, talking about the need for more schools, how affordable housing is going in the area, certain safety measures. And also, we updated him about our 20th anniversary celebrations and all the good things that city staff and the Cordova Community Council has done. And last but not least, on Saturday, I attended the Indian Independence Day celebrations at CSCOS. Where President Luke Wood was not there, but I'm an alumni of Sac State as well. So it was really nice to go back and see the university, and there were thousands of people. It was, we had representations from six cities, mayors and councilman people that attended that event. So it was really nice to see the cultural performances and the huge turnout and yummy food. Thanks.
Thank you, Siri. David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Been pretty busy in the past couple of weeks. I had a meeting at the Rancho Cordova Youth Center, the RCYC, talking about their summer activities, kind of getting an update on where they were. In terms of engaging other organizations to use the facility, got an update on how Boys and Girls Club is using the facility. There are some growing pains there, I think, in figuring out how to fully utilize the space. You know, can you do boxing there or not, for example, is one of the issues with PAL. But it was a very, I think, positive meeting, and I look forward to working more with them on getting as many youth-focused activities into that center as possible. Had a great meeting with the CCC. We have an RCA staff member to announce pretty soon, not at this meeting, but very soon. And we're making some nice progress on the Mineshaft Project that is going to be a, I think, the largest community center. Certainly in Rancho Cordova, but perhaps in this part of our region. I managed to install my son at Notre Dame last week. That's right. I called Donald, who's a well-known Notre Dame fan from the gift store there, from the bookstore, which is, like, I don't know, think Macy's, and you're close. And I said, Donald, what do you need from Notre Dame? And he said, well, I think my wife has purchased one of everything for me already, so there's literally nothing I can request.
The catalogs show up for Christmas in, like, the next few weeks. Yeah, no, I'm not kidding. Yeah, thank you. Congratulations.
It's a standing offer, though. I'll be going back regularly. I liked it so much, I felt like staying myself and reading and rolling as a freshman, but I don't think they'd take me.
There's always hope.
There's always hope, yeah, there's always hope. Go back and teach. I think that's my son's nightmare right there, wouldn't it? Take my PhD and follow him to Notre Dame. Yeah, that'd be, oh, I'd love that, actually. That's a great idea, Donald. Let's see. NLC leadership staff is coming here in a few weeks. Because next summer, I may have mentioned this before, but next summer, as I'm going to be NLC president, we are going to host the NLC Summer Meeting in Rancho Cordova. And that is going to be an interesting experience for all involved. Typically, that meeting is held at a larger city. And small jurisdictions, when they're in leadership, might go to, for example, if Atlanta is nearby, they'll host a meeting in Atlanta, right in their hometown. The whole point of my being president is, I think, most of this country lives in small towns. And most of this country lives in suburban communities. And I want to make the point that we can host such an event, and we can expose the leadership to that, as opposed to a big city. So it's our intent to host everything here in Rancho Cordova. And Donald, you've been to this. Linda, I'm not sure if you've been to an NLC Summer Meeting or not. But this is a 300-person sort of meeting with a lot of subgroups meeting, so it's going to take a lot. We have a planning group coming together, and they're meeting us here in about three weeks to plan that out. So if you guys have any input into that, for example, I thought one great evening event would be at Soilborne Farms. You can accommodate that number of people. It's unique, truly suburban and awesome, of course. But if there's other ideas like that about things we could do, I'd like to hear from you about it. And I think that meeting's happening in about three weeks.
David, and I think the unique thing about us is, most cities don't have enough hotels to do something like that, if they're not a big city. Because I can't remember, whoever it was that was mayor last year, when it was in Atlanta. What, he was a city, you know, a suburb out there, and they didn't have a hotel large enough that you could do that.
Exactly.
We actually do. That's very rare.
Exactly. And my other intent is, you know, they have like a transportation committee, right, policy committee? And typically, they would meet in a room in a convention center. My thought is, let's not do that. Let's send them to either Caltrans local office here. Or we'll send them to the air traffic control area, something like that. Put them up in the tower at Mather. Yeah, we'll send public safety to Calio, oh, yes, and do their meeting there. I just think that really would explain sort of what suburbia is like and how we have to collaborate with other governments. And big cities are not the do-all, end-all of cityhood in the United States. Anyway, exactly. All right, so that's happening in a few weeks, and then next summer will be the big event. National Night Out was awesome, meeting with Senator Nilo, Siri, that was a great meeting we had with Roger, long friend of ours and the city. Represented areas around us for a long time, a great senator for us now. And finally, I would like to mention that, you know, we have a long tradition of whooping up on Folsom in these youth league things. So I know when my son was in eighth grade playing, you know, soccer, that happened repeatedly. And I have to say, the Folsom parents didn't like it. But the Rancho Cordova parents behaved marvelously well, and we repeated that over and over. So Donald, those are your charges.
Garrett is one of the coaches, too.
Oh, Garrett, beat Folsom. All right, thank you for the time.
That's too funny. In addition to National Night Out and the Region Business Dinner. We are now all enjoying concerts in the park, and I think you heard Travel and Tourism talk about that. And the meeting with Senator Nilo was really very nice. He's really trying to get out and make sure that all of his constituents know that he's back and ready to go to work for everybody. And of course, the fact that he's, his office is, his district office is located here in City Hall is really very nice. I had the very unique experience of partnering with our Lieutenant Gonzalez. And speaking to all of the people who came to Friday prayer service at the Islamic Society of Rancho Cordova. It was really very nice, a huge range of ages. I know there was a gentleman in front of me who must have been well into his 90s. And then there were some little boys in the audience. And I talked about the cultural history of Rancho Cordova and the fact that we pride ourselves in being very diverse. And Lieutenant Gonzalez talked about the fact that, well, it was really, I should say, that it was really was organized. Or we were invited in response to the very unfortunate incident that happened at Heron Landing Park a couple of Sundays ago. And so it was important for us to talk about the diversity of Rancho Cordova. And for Lieutenant Gonzalez to talk about the zero tolerance attitude that RCPD has in terms of that kind of behavior, which is not welcome nor typical of Rancho Cordova. Yes, certainly enjoyed everything that Pat Humes, our supervisor, had to say on Friday at the Cordova Community Council. And it was fun, because now we have two supervisors. So Rich Desmond joined him also. Rich was not on the program, but he was there to support everything that Patrick had to say. And then, in terms of things that have happened already. I attended a graduation over at the Youth Center of a first-ever in this, in Northern California class of young people who have been learning construction trades. These kids are all 16. They have learned everything there is to know about construction. Hands-on experience, work with tools, small tools, big tools. No, David, they didn't get to drive a bulldozer, but they did get to do all sorts of other machines. And it is sponsored partly by the unions. And so when these kids turn 18, they can immediate, they will be immediately eligible to join a construction trades union. It's their choice. And then ultimately, after a certain number of hours they put into the trade, then they will be fully vested in the benefits that go along with being a union member. And listening to these kids and then listening to the people who spoke to them. Chief Luke and I were privileged to be the ones who helped to pass out the graduation certificates. And these kids were really very special, and I was very pleased to have been invited to participate. There's a couple of cool things coming up. I hope everybody got a postcard about bike repairs. Both at the Village Green as well as Stone Creek Community Park. And a community bike ride that's coming up at Eagles Nest Park on the 14th of October. And one of the other things, the last thing that Mark mentioned, was the fact that the Capital International Film Festival will be back here in Rancho Cordova for the second year. The kickoff is September the 29th. The films will be shown on September the 30th and October the 1st. A lot of them will be here at the City Hall. And they have over 50 films from 23 countries coming to participate in the film festival. A huge variety of things, everything from short films to long films. And many of the filmmakers, there's like two dozen of the filmmakers, who are coming to talk about their film and the experiences. All of these things are nonfiction. And so they express people's challenges, people's, people's goals, people's hopes and dreams. Things that they have encountered in their personal life experience, and it should be as fascinating this year as it was last year. So with that, I will turn it over to our remote city manager, Mica, for his comments.
Well, thank you, Mayor. You know, and congratulations, Vice Mayor Sandra, on your drop-off last week. I'm in the middle of a drop-off for my daughter for college for the first time today. So that is why I'm unfortunately remote today, but really exciting times. I really just want to highlight one thing, which is, when it comes to our district schedule. And we have our maps that have all been submitted late last week. They will all be published for review tomorrow. And it's a very important discussion we're going to have on August 29th at the public hearing to discuss those maps. And then also a follow-up public meeting the next day on August 30th as well. So for those who are interested, that is the next step in the districting conversation. And we'll look forward to those conversations on the 29th and the 30th. And that's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move into our consent calendar items. Consent calendar items can be approved with one motion, unless somebody would like to remove one of those items or we have public comment. So let's ask if anybody has an item 9.1 through 9.4 that they need to have removed? And I don't see any. Stacy, do we have any public comment on any of those items?
I'm looking at Zoom, and there's no hands that are raised for Zoom or telephone. I do not have any speaker cards, but I do have two emails, one for 9.2 and one for 9.3.
Okay.
Would you like me just to acknowledge those now?
Sure.
Okay. For item 9.2, the city clerk's office received a public comment from Angel Ball. That public comment has been distributed to the city council. It's been placed on the website. And it is also printed for the public in the back of the council chambers. For item 9.3, the city clerk's office received a public comment for James Garcia. That has also been distributed and made available to the public.
Great, thank you. Then, hearing nothing else, are we ready for motion? Second? Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sandra?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes, thank you very much. We have no consent public hearing items. So we'll move into public hearing items, and the first one is 11.1. Stacy, you want to read the title?
Yes. Jackson Properties Major Design Review and Height Exception, project number PLND-0622-0044.
So the action on this one is to continue it to the 5th of September, but we did receive a public comment on this one?
Yes, we did. We have one public comment for this item from James Garcia. It has been distributed to the city council, made available to the public on the website. And it's also been printed in the council chambers, and we do have a hand raised in Zoom.
Okay.
Did you want to open the public comment, or, I mean, the public hearing, or?
I'll do that.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing for 11.1 and ask you to open the Zoom call.
James, I've been muted you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Great. I'm James Garcia, member of the Stone Creek neighborhood. Just finally was able to acknowledge and be able to log in to the planning portal. That's, I find that a little disturbing that you actually have to log in to get to be able to see the documentation. We've been informed in the past that you've never had to create an account for that. But now this is the second time I've had to go in as a signed-in account holder to be able to view the documents on the planning website. So just find that a little disturbing that there's a lot of people that don't create accounts. Don't think you would have to create an account, because we've been informed we haven't had to create an account to actually see those documents. But after seeing it, it looks like the plans showed for a height of 42 feet. And based upon the Mather Spa, that actually shows a 24 feet to 40 feet. But has some exceptions that will allow up to 150 feet maximum. Don't know how that can happen. So once again, we're having a project that is being put forth for you for your approval for another warehouse, mind you. This time on Mather property that has its own restrictions. And it looks like it's being presented with an exception for the height. So I really do hope that when you hear this officially in two weeks' time, it looks like, on the 5th, that you take that into consideration. Or send word back to the planning department not to put this project forth because it is, again, exceeding the normal maximum height allowed without, or prior to receiving an exception. So want to know why there's always exceptions to all these fun rules when we have them in black and white, especially with the spas. So that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Anybody else, Stacy?
Madam Mayor, I had a quick question on this.
Yeah.
Just a process question. I believe a member of the public claimed that this was not reviewed. I believe a member of the public claimed that this was not reviewed by the planning commission. I'm just curious as to why. One, is that accurate? And two, why?
Darcy, welcome.
Good evening, Darcy Galart, Planning Manager. That is correct. The Mather Special Planning Area has different levels of review based upon the proposed size of this particular project. It states that it only goes to city council for approval.
Okay. Thanks. Appreciate the answer.
Again, the Mather SBA was a document that was adopted about 1995. So we need a motion to, pardon?
And it's still alive.
And it's still alive. So we need a motion to continue this to the 5th of September?
One comment about what you just said, maybe we should think about updating those types of things if we can. What parts of it were allowed to?
Um, yeah, we were not the adopting agency.
Obviously.
Not by a long shot. So we need a motion to continue. Thank you. Sir?
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Garrett, turn your mic up.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, item 11.2.
For item 11.2, the subject and title is an adoption of the Rancho Cordova Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. Negative Declaration SEQA and the adoption of the Rancho Cordova Climate Action and Adaptation Plan.
And we're going to turn this over to Stefan.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Stefan Heisler, Housing Manager for the City of Rancho Cordova. Also joining me this evening from our technical consultant, Ascent Environmental, is Andrew Martin. I believe the city clerk's moving him over. I'll be doing the bulk of the presentation, but Andrew will be here as well to help answer any questions. And we are here tonight to present the final draft Climate Action and Adaptation Plan and the SEQA Initial Study Negative Declaration. The goals for tonight are to update the city council on amendments made to the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan since our draft presentation to the city council on May 1st, 2023. And one quick note, I should say during the presentation, staff will be using the CAP, Climate Action Plan, Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. Those terminology kind of simultaneously. We're all referring to the same thing, which is the Climate Action, excuse me, Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. Still a mouthful after three years. Secondly, we'll be-
No wonder you're using an acronym.
CAP is a lot easier. We'll be presenting the initial study negative declaration or the SEQA review for this document for adoption and then the final draft CAP for adoption. To give some brief context and background to this conversation and kind of how we got to where we are today, this project began back in June 2020, if you can believe it, through a discussion around the local early action planning grant and a housing workshop where council expressed interest and staff got direction to apply for grant funding to prepare Climate Action Plan. On March 1st, we held a Climate Action Plan scoping discussion with the city council where we received direction to move forward with a SEQA qualified Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. July 1st, staff executed a contract with Ascent Environmental after selecting Ascent through an RFP process and CAP preparation work began. Over the next two years, we've been busy with technical studies, public outreach, including numerous surveys and meetings, and then presented the draft Climate Action Adaptation Plan to the planning commission on April 12th and receiving comments from planning commission and then brought it to a city council, full city council discussion on May 1st. Since May 1st, we have issued the SEQUEST study or the initial study and negative declaration for public review during the month of June, and we've received comments, responded to those comments, and now we are here this evening to present those updates to the final draft CAP as well as consider adoption of the document. So really important to kind of frame the conversation are our reasons for doing the Climate Action Plan are first and foremost, reducing the city's fair share of climate change causing emissions, as well as increasing resilience to existing and future climate hazards. Then also establishing a citywide strategy to guide future decision-making. And I should say also on this point, with, with an adopted Climate Action Plan, we will be able to leverage some of that data and measures for our upcoming general plan updates, which will help us facilitate and accelerate preparation of some of those general plan element updates, as well as be able to integrate implementation of the CAP into some of those updated elements as well. And then a big component was including elements required for a SEQA qualified plan in order to streamline the environmental process for new development. And absolutely, that is an intent of adopting this plan is to provide a streamlined environmental process review for qualifying projects. And just to briefly respond to some of the comments that we've received in this process as to concerns about whether that process will be too lenient, I think it is, it is going to be not a low bar in order to show consistency with Climate Action Plan measures in order to receive this environmental review process benefits. Secondly, here to standardize actions to reduce emissions across new development and really coordinate across our activities. And then lastly, supporting affordable housing production to meet market demand. And that's another piece of that nexus between providing a benefit to environmental review processes, which allowed us to use planning grant fundings. 100% of the costs to prepare this plan were coming from those planning, those housing planning grant funding sources. And then last, of course, on the bottom of the page, attracting and securing grant funds for Climate Action and Adaptation Plan activities, as well as synergistic city objectives. There's a number of funds out there which we'll, I'll be able to highlight in this presentation that will not only bring us the benefits of greenhouse gas emissions, but making us a more resilient and healthy city, as well as other city objectives such as promoting the positive image of Rancho Cordova. So just to briefly go over a couple of the key components of the Climate Action Plan, the first one being our greenhouse gas emissions inventory and really just highlighting the major sectors here on this slide. You can see on-road transportation accounts for approximately 62% of our greenhouse gas emissions, non-residential building energy at 18% and residential building energy at 14%. Within those three categories, that's approximately 94% of the city's greenhouse gas emissions. That's the second piece, second component to really highlights this very brief overview of the document is our future greenhouse gas emissions forecast and targets. So on this page, you can see the greenhouse gas emissions inventory projected out into the future, using 2019 as our baseline and then looking forward to our target years of 2030 and our goal year of 2045. And those, those dates coincide with the statewide targets that are already set as well. So you can see in 2019, our emissions were approximately 680,000 metric tons. And by 2030, we do expect, based on the adopted components of other agencies such as the state and other agencies such as SMUD, the actions taken that will overall kind of reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. But then you'll see there's a gap between the top of the graph on 2030 as well as that dotted line, that dotted 2030, which is our target. And so that is the gap that will need to be filled or completed or met by the mitigation measures within the Climate Action Adaptation Plan. And that approximately is 77,100 metric tons, sort of the math that we're trying to get to by 2030. So the measures to reduce greenhouse gas emissions is, is the, the next key component that I'll highlight in this presentation as part of the Climate Action Plan. These measures are adapted to achieve the 2030 target of, of 36% greenhouse gas emissions below 2019 levels, as well as make substantial progress towards the 2045 goal to being 67% below 2019 levels. The primary focus, as you can guess already, on these measures is between transportation and the building energy measures, as well as solid waste. So transportation is 69% of the reductions anticipated by 2030, building energy 17% and solid waste 11%. Next, I'll highlight some of the updates that we've made to the final draft Climate Action Plan in, in response to comments received from the public, planning commission and city council. The city fleet came up and a number of comments of transitioning to EVs. As you may know, the city leases our, our vehicle fleets. We don't own, we own a couple of vehicles, but by and large, we are a leased city fleet. And so the transition to electric vehicles can begin pretty quickly as those lease terms expire. For some of our heavier duty vehicles, it may take a bit longer, but we have some time for maybe some of the technology to catch up in those areas. The next one is our transition of gas to electric appliances. That main comment of the point of sale requirement has been removed, and that has been replaced with a point of replacement alternative. And then there were several comments about including alternative fuels, including hydrogen, and those have been added into our transportation strategies. Next comments from some of our residents about highlighting local amenities, those have been included into our narratives. And then enumerating the supporting actions for ease of reference, and we've been able to make that change. And then one that's not listed here as well, responding to a comment from the Cordova Recreation Park District, we do plan to add one edit to our adaptation strategies to clarify the role of outside agencies in some of the implementation measures. And then I'll spend a few minutes talking about our Climate Action Plan implementation, as I know that was a major comment that came up and has come up through comments. So tonight before you is the framework of the major strategies, but the real implementation will happen through the annual or biannual plans that staff will be presenting to the city council, which we plan to present along with the budget process or the budget discussions. And those annual plans will consider several elements, including current progress toward meeting the performance standards of those measures, of individual measures, as well as the availability of grant funding and how we can target and be strategic about our grant funding sources to coincide with our activities, as well as other identified city priorities and partnerships with outside agencies. Every two years, we'll be preparing a monitoring report to show progress towards meeting performance standards. And then every five years will be a more complete greenhouse gas emissions inventory and plan update. Another comment that, oh, before I get to that, there was a comment regarding the Berkeley case that we briefly respond to. And that Berkeley case was a ban on natural gas infrastructure, sort of a non-building code related way of implementing that ban on natural gas infrastructure. In our draft Climate Action Plan, we are not going that route. We are proposing a building code or reach code approach, which is not covered or, or applicable to that Berkeley case. So we're not, we are not concerned about the implications of that case at this time. As far as cost to implement, one of the comments that has been made is that there aren't any sort of associated or estimated cost to implement measures. And I think through this plan, as I mentioned before, is it's an overall framework, and it is pretty difficult to estimate costs of implementation because there are so many factors that are involved in implementation of these measures. There's a few listed here, and I'll just go over them briefly. One of them, the primary one being private market or macroeconomic trends, to the extent that the private market is already moving in the right direction towards reducing greenhouse gas emissions, you know, that will necessitate what level of involvement the city will have to take. So we'll be mark, we'll be watching those trends very carefully when it comes to developing our implementation plans. Second being policies and ordinances, these are where the city council can sort of set the rules and kind of push the burden onto the private market as far as implementing the various measures. So again, it's difficult to measure the costs involved in those, you know, as we determine the appropriateness for, for different policies or ordinances. Excuse me. Next being federal, state and local grants, and to the extent that those are available and we can leverage our plan in order to bring those resources to the city, that's going to make a difference as well in our implementation plans. And I'll highlight that on the next slide, but essentially there are billions of dollars available currently for this, for these types of projects, as well as other related efforts too. And then lastly would be city programs incentives. So if it falls to the city to then fund a program, you know, that's where I think during the annual implementation plan process, we can kind of consider where we want to put our scarce resources into which specific measures. So to highlight some of the grant opportunities that are available, currently at the federal level, there's nearly $100 billion through the Inflation Reduction Act and the Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act, as well as additional ongoing programs through the various departments listed here, as well as others. We're already excited to be working on one of these, which is the Climate Pollution Reduction Grant, along with the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District, or our Air Quality District, to be able to bring sort of resources to the Sacramento region and specifically to Rancho Cordova through that program, as well as the one-time non-competitive Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant, or EECBG. The city is entitled to 100, approximately $140,000, which we'll be able to program here locally. And we expect to bring an item to the city council to discuss where to put those funds to pretty shortly. At the state level, annually, there's approximately $1 billion available through the various greenhouse gas reduction fund programs and additional funding through the 2021 state climate budget. And then the funding kind of flowing through the various departments shown there as well. And so again, we can synergize quite well, I think, showing the adoption of Climate Action Plan and the outreach that has gone into that and leveraging that to bring funds to the city for other projects as well. One in particular could be affordable housing. And then, of course, there are local funds and incentives through SMUD, Sacramento Metropolitan Utility District and our Air Quality District as well. And then I'll go through some of our, our SEQA initial study negative declaration points. An initial study was conducted to analyze potential environmental impacts and a negative declaration was prepared pursuant to SEQA requirements. The initial studies show that there is no substantial evidence in light of the whole record before the agency that the project may have a significant effect on the environment. This ISND was released for a 30-day public review period on June 2, and four, four letters were received by staff in response. In response to these comments, no changes that materially affect the analysis or conclusions were made, therefore no recirculation is required. And then none of the comments received affect, affect the adequacy of the ISND to address the proposed project. Therefore, staff recommends adoption of the ISND to meet SEQA requirements. Just to complete our staff recommendation, there are two resolutions attached to this item. The first would be to adopt the resolution, which will adopt the initial study negative declaration, and the second to adopt the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan. And briefly to highlight next steps, which I've kind of covered through the implementation section, but if adopted, staff will, will then begin work on, excuse me, developing an implementation strategy and beginning to apply for available grant opportunities. We will return to the city council as needed to receive direction on implementation of CAP measures. And then the monitoring reports will come every two years, and then the inventory and plan update be conducted every five years. That concludes our presentation. And if there are any additional questions for staff?
Thank you, Stefan. Any questions for staff? Donald?
No.
Terry?
No.
David?
I have a couple. We're working basically on a state mandate at this point, right? I think when we initiated this, we weren't quite a mandate, but now there sort of is an expectation that we produce the sort of a plan.
There, there's still no mandate, but there are, there are statewide targets that have been set, and we are creating a plan that does plan to meet those targets.
And this is sort of like a requirement for certain grants, that this sort of a plan be in place so that you're eligible.
We anticipate that it will, and having it in place puts us into a very good position to show the work that we've done in this space to compete.
And we've received some grant dollars to support this effort?
We have received planning grant funds that we have allocated to this project. So it has been, this effort has been 100% funded through those grant funding, yeah.
All right. You know, I think some of the best effects we can get is chasing efficiency. And I worry overall as a state about how we approach some of these environmental issues. I could make a, make a list of some that they're, they have public appeal, they have legislative appeal, but they don't necessarily pencil out if you're looking at it like from an economic perspective or even an overall environmental goal. An example would be legislation a couple of years ago that was going to add a lot of cost to try to control plastic release into the Pacific from California. And I think it was on order of a billion or two a year that was going to add costs to like how we do business, how our trash hauler does business. And the effect was, you know, I think California contributes something like 0.4% of the plastic that is, ends up in the Pacific comes from California. Meanwhile, you know, 30% comes from China and 25% comes from Indonesia and a bunch comes from Thailand and Vietnam. And spending $2 billion for, to reduce our plastic effluent by, I don't know what it was, less than a third, I think, that ratio is just kind of, you know, inefficient. All the construction stuff we'd have to do to accommodate that, I don't think was accounted for. So we kind of, we kind of repeat that in California as we push this edge. So I want to think that, you know, in Rancho Cordova, as we, as we do this, we try to maintain the biggest, broadest analysis of the requirements we're trying to put in place or the goals we're putting in place to accommodate true, you know, a true gain in efficiency and environmental benefit, as opposed to doing a bunch of things that sound good and look good, but may even have contradictory effects if you look at the big picture. have contradictory effects if you look at the big picture. And the problem, the challenge is that big picture is really hard to see. Economists have a hard time seeing it, scientists have a hard time seeing it, because you have to go up and down the entire supply chain of whatever it is you're working on or affecting. So, you know, it sounds simple, perhaps, the way I've stated it, but it's not. And it's rarely done because it's not. But I think that is our best charge. Otherwise, you know, we could actually do things that have a negative effect and think we're doing something positive. So I don't know if you have any comment on that?
It's hard to see that big picture, like you said.
That was a very big picture question, David.
Yeah.
I can certainly see, you know, benefits from multiple angles. So, you know, from the action planning side, if you're focused solely on greenhouse gas reductions emissions, this is a plan that does that, that puts it in place. If you see it as sort of a tool to streamline development, you know, and offer that benefit, there's that angle as well, as well as aligning us with programs that can bring funding to our city for, you know, whatever synergistic kinds of policy objectives that we have. There's, I think there's sort of a multifaceted document that can maybe play some of those different roles.
Yeah, so I agree with what you just said entirely. And I think some examples would be facilitating development along Folsom Boulevard that allows people a transit-based lifestyle in a denser living condition would meet all of these goals and benefit the city, and it's one of our goals anyway. I think reimagining how this business park that we're sitting in here, how we're going to use all these parking lots in 30 or 40 years, or next year, is pretty critically important, you know, to the future of this community and also for environmental concerns. So I think there are win-wins like that that'll probably get over my bar of let's look at the full, you know, length impact of this from start to finish in terms of the environment. So I would encourage that as opposed to a rush towards whatever is popular right now without a lot of analysis of whether or not that makes sense. An example I would give, I guess, in that case would be, and I appreciate that we have hydrogen listed here, in addition to just the idea that all EVs can be run by lithium, because we're seeing, you know, internationally, there probably isn't enough lithium available to be mined in the world just to meet the demands that are being set by the legislature on California automobiles. So the California automobile production rate to create enough EVs would consume 100% of the world's lithium output this year. That's not likely to happen. So, you know, thinking outside of that box, whatever is hugely popular, I think, just makes a ton of sense.
I like the fact that, aside from David's encouragement to think globally, it strikes me that some of the things that you've talked about really have to do with the small parts. And like converting our gigantic city fleet to EVs, and, but at the same time acknowledging that there may be a new technology coming like hydrogen, and curiously, one of the SMUD directors is driving a hydrogen car. There's only two hydrogen fueling stations in the region, one at Wattenfer Oaks and one in West Sacramento, but he just happens to be convenient to one of them. And so that works for him, but it'll be interesting to see what his experience turns out to be. And the other thing, as David mentioned, we've, we may, we may or may not have a big problem with a lot of buildings that may need to be repurposed. And the question is, what do we do with them and how do we do it? We're also, when we build, for instance, when we build a new hotel like this, the new hotel that's, that we're going to hear in a while, the fact that a building that was built as a hotel, if it becomes not necessary as a hotel, it is readily transferable to an apartment project, something like that. So when we think about multi-use buildings, you know, I'm a huge proponent of the fact that we can't just build a civic building that has only one purpose and is used only 20 days out of the year. It has to be multipurpose. So those kinds of things are the sorts of things that I really find intriguing about a project like this. Stacy, do we have public comment?
Yes.
Then we'll open the public comment period and ask for you to let us know.
I will start with those who I have speaker cards for, and then I will go to Zoom and telephone. Brenda Gustin, following Brenda will be Mark Berry, and then Helen Wayland-Bachal.
Welcome, Brenda.
What's your name?
Stephen.
Stephen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hi. Well, I just want to say thank you, Stephen. I appreciate that you've taken recommendations and implemented them, those changes as you develop this comprehensive plan. I do wonder how will improvements along the way be made to the cap as implementation begins, and will the public be able to see that along the way? It can be very difficult as a citizen to understand the procedures of the city of Rancho Cordova, and I realize there's more than one meeting regarding projects of concern, some of which I have personally attended. The slide deck that you showed tonight, Stephen, would have been very helpful if provided before tonight, because that was not in the packet unless I missed it. But the packet was 1,199 pages for tonight's agenda, the way everything, when you went through it. And so for me, looking through the 147-page cap, I think there were other ones, there was the 31 pages for the Exhibit B alone for the flood ordinance, were included, all of these things were given to us Friday night for a meeting on Monday night. And it's not that we haven't been, you know, staying up on some of these things, too. So I would just really like to know, I'm learning how this works, but I'd sure like to have more advice about how to stay up on things. I do write letters, I most of the time don't receive any responses, and so that's kind of frustrating that I put my time and effort in, and a lot of other people do. And, you know, I saw responses in the cap to four major agencies, and I saw responses in your implementation and changes, yes. And, you know, sometimes you just have this empty auditorium you're talking to, and you never hear anything back, not even an echo. So, thank you, Stephen. And the last thing is I do not understand why the city would want to streamline the environmental process for new development on such a broad sweeping program. This is the, you know, it's cap, climate action. We don't know yet so much, and I think you're trying to adapt, and I see that, but to have an, oh, maybe I don't understand this, the neg decks, but they seem to be given away like candy. Thank you. That's all I want to say.
Thanks, Brenda. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. And Stephen, thank you for taking on the existential question of our time. Not a simple task, and I just really have a very, probably relatively simple and sort of focused comment, but basically, you know, I'm Mark Berry, I'm president of Tiffany Farms Homeowners Association. I'm going to talk basically about Attachment 5, Pages 26 and 27, and it goes into the storm water drainage system and the observed historic data and the city storm water management and flood protections designed based upon historic observations. And then it basically states that if these historic storm intensities are exceeded, this would likely begin to disrupt, deteriorate, and damage, or generally affect the performance of the city storm water system. And then on Page 27, it talks about the levee system and increases in precipitation, particularly in the intensity and frequency of extreme participation due to climate change will have impacts on the integrity of our levee system. And it goes on to talk about the levee system, particularly those not maintained through the federal protection system, which, as you know, we don't, we don't have that federal protection system in Rancho Cordova. So there's concerns about these will be exacerbated by climate change. Then it goes on to say there are currently two levees in the city which protect residential neighborhoods, Cordova Meadows Levee and the Sunrise Levee. Now, this is rated as a potential high-impact score for, you know, damage in your report, but really Tiffany Farms has four levees. We are on the wet side of the Cordova Meadow Levee, and really we're, you know, kind of concerned about, there's, you know, are we omitted from analysis in the Climate Action Plan? And basically, you know, in 2017, the water wasn't even a high-water situation, but it did get up to about five feet of the top of our levee. 1986, our homeowners association did have some flood inundation. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. When I saw there are two levees in the city, I live in a bathtub with four levees. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark. Welcome, Helen.
Thank you. Climate action. I don't see the data that supports how some of these numbers are going to get there. Key issues is, as the building increases, and as Dave mentioned, we want more dense housing, when you add more dense housing, you're actually adding to the carbon because you're taking away the green, the green that produces the oxygen. So there, it doesn't make, it's not a good trade-off. The other area is with the increase in housing, you have, housing, you have an increase in automobiles. Automobiles are a way of life in the state of California. I don't see any data that shows when this goes into effect, the number of automobiles in the city of Rancho Cordova that are gas or electric, because you're not going to really have the hydrogen, because Linda pointed out that there's only really two stations. And if you don't have access to those stations, or you don't go to that side of town, it doesn't make any sense to have a hydrogen car. What you don't also talk about is the things that are going to affect the carbon. The things are the set legislation that controls the number of vehicles that are going to be produced that are energy efficient. There are timelines that go from 2024 and 2044, I believe it is, that has standards set. That data is real critical because the city has data that says the vehicles that they have. So to me, it's a fairy tale, the data that you're putting up here, because there's no real hard data that supports where we are and where we're going to be. The other issue is you're controlling the person that wants to have a gas stove. So are you telling us that propane tanks are going to be banned for future housing? Tell a person that's going to produce an almost million-dollar house that they can't have a gas stove. I don't think that's going to happen. Then, let me see, what else? So the new growth, you have a lot of new growth. You've got to have a data that says as these houses get produced and people move in, what is the carbon impact for those housings in the loss of the greenage, the addition of the vehicles? You know, there's a lot of things that that report doesn't have, but you did a really good job with what you have, if somebody only wants certain items. But I do agree, the report was kind of long, and I agree with Mark Berry, you left down a major levee that in 2000, in 1986, I saw the water in the Gator Community. I saw the water in the lot in front of me that had no houses. Then in 90, in the orchard. And then in 97, I could have sworn I saw some water in the orchard. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen.
I'm now going to go to Zoom. And James Garcia, your hand is raised. I will unmute you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak. And then Oscar, you will follow James.
Welcome, James.
Hello, I'm James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. I too have some information. I would, I would do support the 350 Sacramento group and indicating that this cap is insufficient. It doesn't have enough data to support all the information Helen mentioned as well, as well as Mr. Sander there about the lithium. I've seen lithium batteries explode in laptops. I've seen them explode in cars. That is not the only true source that we can have for EVs. It is one of the bigger ones. And as you mentioned, this fudge with having the only two hydrogen fuel places, one at Wattenfer Oaks and in West Sacramento, would love to do that, because people want to be able to drive places and go places. They don't want to spend 45 minutes on an EV charging at a supercharge station to go from one end of the state to the other end of the state. There's been enough projects out there of people traveling across the United States, going from Canada down to Chicago. It was supposed to have been a quick trip, and it ended up being a nightmare for several owners. There's a Ford Lightning vehicle that the Canadian member tried to use, tried to go to different fueling stations or charging stations, and it did not. They weren't available. They got down to where they had 11 miles left on their battery. That is something that we don't have capability here. Are we going to be putting in, at taxpayer expense, electric charging stations in every home so someone can actually afford to have an EV? I don't think so. And as Helen mentioned, again, we are taking away all of that green. When you build a home, you only have so much space where you can put a green space, and you have businesses out there, and they are taking away the natural greenery that is producing the oxygen that we need to help cut that carbon. They take that carbon and trans, oh, what's the scientific term? Convert it into actual oxygen. Sorry, I can't think of it. Mr. Sander would know as a scientist there, the correct term, sorry. But that is what we need to be able to solve for. I'm looking at this chart, and it is unrealistic. When you have 37% of the greenhouse gas coming from heavy trucks and non-residential energy, that's a huge chunk of our pie. And we're building the stuff that is actually going to produce more of that if we continue to approve the types of projects that have been on the slate here. One, that is being postponed, another warehouse. So again, think about the whole process before you implement this without any actual teeth to fine and change things. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Oscar, you've been unmuted, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak. It still says it's muted. He needs to mute it on his end.
Oscar, you need to unmute yourself.
Right, how's this?
Are you good?
Oh, great.
We can hear you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Stacy. Good evening, council members, finally. I'm Oscar Balliger with Rio de Fati, Sacramento, and I want to thank staff for their professional and even-handed running of the cap's public review. We've been involved with the cap for more than two years, and we have six sets of detailed comments in the record, and the seventh is in your packet. We're still saying that the plan has great ideas, but a qualified cap is not a policy document, you know. It doesn't just guide possible future decisions. By law, the cap is itself a mitigation plan, and from the moment it's adopted, its measures will determine the on-the-ground, project-specific mitigation for each complying project. As others have noted, the cap currently lacks specifics to show that its measures are feasible, effective, and enforceable. And that's what CECO requires for such a qualified cap that will be used for future CECO compliance by upcoming projects. So we believe that the cap is not ready for adoption today as a qualified plan. But the city proposes to develop a cap implementation strategy, and that document could cure the lack of detail, the cap shortcomings. And that document could cure the lack of detail, the cap shortcomings. So, we suggest that you adopt the cap today, not as a qualified plan, but as a strategy and framework document that would provide the city a better basis than a contentious cap would to seek forthcoming IRA and other funds. Then, when the implementation plan, which we heard about a few moments ago, is completed to CEQA standards, the city could adopt it along with the cap as a qualified plan. And we suggest this as a prudent and reasonable way to go forward. 350's goal is always to help the city adopt and implement an effective CEQA compliant plan as soon as it's possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Oscar. Anybody else?
Those are all the speakers that we have via Zoom and telephone. The city clerk's office did receive some public comment via email. Those came from the following individuals. Laura Taylor, Derek Codren, Jason Holder, Oscar Ballaguir-Gir, Lori Heller, Kristi Hendrickson Perry, Guy Hall, Dwight McCurdy, Cynthia Chalit, Peter McLean, and Kent Listen, and Eric Guds. I also did just want to mention that the city clerk's office did release this agenda for the council meeting on Thursday. And it was around shortly after 6:00 PM. And that, I do believe, as I just went online, the PowerPoint was included for this item.
You generally do. Okay, thank you. All right, then, we'll close the public comment period. Does anybody have any questions or comments, Donald?
I just have some general observations. I want to say this started, staff can correct me if I'm wrong, two and a half, three years ago, I want to say. Mainly from, I would say, from the development community in looking at, how can we make housing development more predictable? And I think that's a very important goal. I think if you asked or polled any of our residents, they would say that housing and homelessness are one of the top, if not the top, issue facing our community and facing most of the communities in this region. And so, adding predictability as far as what needs to be mitigated and how you mitigate those things, I think is where this conversation started. So, in some questions that, you know, why would we want to do that? That's why we would want to do that. Because faster development means addressing a massive problem that we have in this state, in this country, which is a lack of housing. And so, comments around, every time you build another house, you're adding to, you know, taking away from the green canopy, and you're adding, you know. Yes, those are all true, but we have to do all of these things at once. We have to chew bubble gum and walk sometimes. And that's what this is trying to prove, or trying to do. What I would also say, and I agree with a lot of the commentators, when it comes to most climate change error, environmental impact studies at this level, when you're talking at a macro level, a lot of it's theoretical. I remember earlier this year, I was at the now Civic Well Conference. And one of the first times from an air perspective that we had an actual event happen where you could look and see what would happen to the air if you took two-thirds or three-quarters of the cars off the road. That actually happened in 2020. And for the first time ever, they were able to not just theoretically say, remove this many cars and see what happens to the air and to the environment and to birds and to wildlife and to water quality. We actually had this event where everyone stayed the heck home for a while, and we had some really great data. But we can't let, what's the old adage? We can't let good become the enemy of, or we can't let perfect become the enemy of the good. Right? We don't sit here and say, because we don't have better data and because we don't have, you know, exact studies on what are the outcomes of these things, that we just don't do anything. And to say things like, you know, I've seen Teslas explode on the highway. I've never personally seen that, but I sure have seen a lot of gas-powered things blow up on our highways. And to say that we're not going to try to do EVs because there was a car that blew up once. Or, you know, a charging battery, you know, for your phone blew up, so we shouldn't fly or have phones. You know, we still need to look at all of these things and understand that, you know, even autonomous driving at some point, are there problems to that? Sure, but at some point, when we implement it, I guarantee you there will be less people dying in car accidents when a robot's doing it over a human. Because as far as I understand, I don't think there's a way to get a robot drunk and then put him in the car. And we still have a huge problem with just that. A lot of comments here, whether it was around transportation and other things, you know, one of these goals is to replace our fleet, which, yeah, I think, would you say, two or three vehicles, everything else is leased, and we can just start leasing cleaner vehicles. We aren't in the place of controlling the marketplace when it comes to what cars are sold and a lot of other things that were made, that comments were made about it. We're looking at a very finite thing. We don't run parks, we don't run the fire district, we don't run the water districts, right? We don't run the sewer districts. Some of us may serve on some of those boards, but we don't do that ourselves, and it's not part of this plan. When we look at this, we're in control of zoning, development, architecture, engineering in a handful of places. And this is addressing the things that we have authority over. And so, while there are references to a lot of other things to say, you know, what about this, or what about this, what about, there are certain things, right? What kind of house gets built, what kind of amenities go into it? That's something that we have a say over. I think there are some communities around here that have tried to implement no gas in new developments, and I think that's still tied up in court. I want to say Berkeley was the one that attempted to do it, and we still don't even know if we put that in here, if we'd even have the power to do it. So, there was a lot of comments made tonight about, you know, the inadequacies of this plan. I think it's worth adopting. It's still part of the CEQA process that we would have, but it would give a little bit more clarity as to what developers and landowners and other folks could do to address these within a plan. And to be frank, David, you brought up, we're going to have to do this. When we started this process, we didn't have to do it. I'm glad we did this kind of legwork to get here, and we can adopt it. And to be frank, we're also one of the last cities to even start this process. So, a lot of them have already gone through this, and I'm sure they have just the same struggles and inadequacies that we have with these same plans. But again, we can't sit here and say, you know, if everybody gives up gas fireplaces and heaters and ranges, that somehow, we're going to know exactly this is what the outcome is. Because again, we can't take those all off and then find out what happens. And in some instances, you just have to go and do some of these things. But if anybody thinks that beyond the fact that this would probably, in a minuscule, if not nominal, way, help address a housing crisis within our city and within our region, that's one step that's important. The other step in this is to sit back and say, in the last few weeks, to say that we are having massive wildfires throughout this state, in this country, and even to our northern borders in Canada that are affecting us today. We also had the first hurricane in the history of our state this week, actually yesterday, come through. And we have, I think, five possible tropical storms brewing off of the Florida coast at the moment. To sit here and say in any way that we shouldn't be trying to do our part with what we control and what we administer and are charged with, to say we're not going to do our part to address climate change, I think is very disappointing if we were to go that route. So, I'm for this plan for now. I'd like to continue to see this maybe annually to see if there are other ways that we can enhance what we are understanding of it and our impact. But we need to do this, and we've been working on this for years. And staff have done a lot of great work to get this far.
Thank you, Donald. Garrett?
I have nothing to say.
I'm sorry, Garrett, did you just say you're good? Okay. Siri?
So, thank you for all the input from the residents. My understanding is, in order to get here, we've had, what, nearly four public community outreach programs, and you've performed multiple other outreach to get the feedback, not just from the residents, but from other agencies. So, I think we've gotten here after incorporating a lot of comments, a lot of feedback from residents and other agencies. And we've seen a peer cities of Elk Grove, West Sacramento, and Davis that have already adopted their climate action plan. And looking at what you have presented, I've seen that the Rancho Cordova 2030 emission reduction target is aligned to the statewide target. So, I agree with Councilmember Terry that, you know, in order to be perfect, we cannot just not start something now. And, you know, my one question is, we still have some feedback and some comments from other agencies, and what is our plan if we have to adopt or use some of these requested changes moving forward?
We can certainly work with the other agencies. In fact, we do plan to, as staff, to be working collaboratively with other agencies and staff and nonprofits as well in the development of our implementation plans, which will be occurring on an annual or biannual basis. So, we will certainly be reaching out and incorporating their comments and feedback along the way through implementation.
Yeah, so we just want to make sure that this is not set in stone, so we can still incorporate feedback as we go.
Absolutely. And then, of course, as I mentioned in the presentation too, we have a five-year cycle of updating the inventory and the overall plan as well and keeping track of sort of measures that aren't working so well and measures that are working very well. So, we'll be incorporating public feedback along the way in all of those processes.
The other thing is, how often, like, again, annually or biannually, that's still a long time to come, give updates on measurable, quantifiable tactics. Is there a shorter time period that we can start having frequent updates?
We can certainly come more frequently than that. I think, just kind of looking forward, one of the good opportunities to have these kinds of discussions might be during the budget discussions that are happening typically on a biannual basis. But I know that there are annual updates to that as well, and we can incorporate updates to the city council more periodically than that.
Okay, thank you.
David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Want to respond to a few of the questions we had from constituents tonight. There's a comment made about Friday night releases of giant documents. And I think that is sort of an ongoing challenge we have as an agency. There was a specific comment there about releasing slides with the rest of the data about the meeting as opposed to only on the day, or not even on the day, of presentation. I think we should, as a city standard, have slides released with the reports, staff reports, et cetera.
David, but didn't staff just clarify that that wasn't accurate, that it was in the packet?
Yes.
She said that right before the beginning of this item.
We released the item on Thursday evening shortly after 6:00. And it did include, we released the agenda packet shortly after 6:00 PM on Thursday, and it did include the PowerPoint.
Okay, good.
And she always includes PowerPoints.
That is our normal standard. I just was hoping we weren't backsliding. With regard to the 1,800 pages, you know, I suppose, we've seen this as Councilwoman Polapati just said several times before. So, it's not all new to us. That probably makes it somewhat easier. There's also a question about streamlining NEGDEX. And I think, Adam, you might best be able to respond to whether or not, or why that is sort of a normal process of development in California.
Sure, sure. I mean, first, I would say that we have an excellent environmental consultant working on this and helping both with the plan, and I believe also the CEQA compliance. And second, you know, the NEGDEX are a standard process for helping environmental analysis occur efficiently. And again, EIRs are really reserved for the rare circumstances where one of the lesser levels of CEQA review is not appropriate. I certainly, you know, might defer to Andrew to address some of the specifics in one of the letters. But as to the comment by, you know, by one of the last members of the public who spoke, I think that it is really important that the next implementation phase will be something that the city will be engaging in bravely, earnestly. And I think that some of those details that the community is asking for will absolutely be, you know, reinforced and made more vivid. That doesn't mean that this step in the process is inadequate. But I think that, you know, we certainly would encourage the community and including the environmental community, to keep watching, to keep working, and to stay engaged, and to really don't stop the city from making the progress that it's trying to make on the path that it's on. And we will continue to see more refinement in this in the next stage. Stefan, I certainly invite you to comment on that. But, you know, this isn't a situation where it appears we're at extreme loggerheads with a particular, you know, community. We're trying to move forward in earnest and productively, really on a path that seems quite consistent with one that many of them are asking for.
And I think it's also important that people know, because we, this kind of question's come up before, all levels of CEQA review come with mandated periods of review. The mandated time between when the document is released and when the document can be heard.
Yeah, I think the NEGDEX probably appears as if we're handing it out quite often, but the reality is, it's more of a norm as opposed to the exceptional EIR.
And it has a three-week advertising period, and an EIR has like a month and a half.
Yeah, both longer than that, but yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. There was a chart, you know, in your presentation, Stefan, that showed sort of the where COT was coming from, how we're going to have to decline those rates. I think the correct perspective is what Councilman Terry pointed out, is that we are sort of a tiny little influence on that. And that, there's a, and you mentioned it in your presentation, you know, this is a mega-market question. This is the entire whole of the economy question about how we modify what we do in substantial things, like all of our some-transportation. So, it's not as if all of that is on the back of the city, nor is that the city's sort of requirement or personal responsibility. We have to contribute and do our part, but we cannot mandate, for example, that everyone Rancho Cordova driving EV. You know, that's in someone else's hands, it's in the market's hands. So, I just want to be sure people understand that that's not our specific goal to accomplish locally. It's our communal goal to accomplish globally. That is a correct interpretation of the chart?
Sure. Our chart is focused on the emissions generated through travel to, from, and activities within Rancho Cordova. So, at least those levels are maybe within our jurisdictional boundaries as best as we can approximate, right? Because some of those boundaries are a little bit fluid.
Good. I do want to associate myself with my colleagues' comments. I think they're correct in everything they said. There was a reference made to the San Diego example and how they are implementing their climate action plan, specifically how it allows people to sort of track and evaluate trade-offs. And is that something we would move towards, you think, in a future iteration of this plan?
We can take a look at their implementation plan. I did briefly look at it, it's quite beautiful. It's a good measure for that sort of document. Depending on the level of resources we want to put into it, we certainly need that level of detail, but, you know, we can create sort of a local version of it.
Yeah, they're a much larger agency with much, many additional resources.
Their staff was pretty numerous.
But I thought that was a very good standard. And finally, I just want to particularly associate myself with the comments about using the best data. I think Donald made an excellent point about that. How did the models hold up, actually, Donald? Do you have any idea? The standard sort of models that we use to make clean air decisions? How did they hold up at that grand experiment?
I don't know if they really, I don't know if we really got into that. We spent so much time just talking about the example. And there was a study in the US, there was a study in London, maybe China was the other one. And then they had one example where China tried to mandate before one of the Olympics, a bunch of the suburbs, everyone stayed home for two weeks to try to lower smog, basically. And try to clean up the air going into, not the Winter Beijing Olympics, or whenever it was before. And they said that was the, at the time, that was the most effective study that they had ever done because no government had, one, very few governments have that kind of power over their residents to tell them that you're just not going to get in your car, or we'll find you or take your car, or whatever. But they made different comparisons, and they spent so much time talking about, like, now we know what happens when you take this many cars off the road and people walk more, and, you know, they don't go very far from their house in general. Like, because what happened in the beginning was, people didn't go to work. And then after about And then after about three months, they started traveling for fun. And then since then, it's, we're actually traveling, I think I shared this, we're traveling more, even if you're working at home, you're driving your car more around town than you would commuting anyways, because people are now taking their kids to school, and they're going over here, and they're going over here, and all of a sudden, they're actually driving more than they used to. But during that three- or four-month period, they showed it, but I don't know if anybody said that, you know, this was way more effective than what we imagined would have happened during then. They spent a lot more time with saying, this is what happened to the air, therefore, this is what happened to water quality, and lots of other things that they threw out there. I'll check, though.
I should.
Dr. Ayala would probably be the best person to, he was one of the presenters.
That would be really fascinating, because you don't get to check your model very often, but in this case, you could.
Yeah, and with an hour and like three different examples, like, you could barely cover what happened, let alone, I guess, comparing it to the whole thing, but maybe that's a good NLC.
Could be.
Session to have.
So, you know, the only comment I'm going to add is, you know, we need to always follow the best data, we need to be data-driven, not poll-driven.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure. So my only question, Stefan, there was a reference made, and I just want to ensure myself, we have not tried to ban the use of natural gas.
That's correct. We have not tried to ban the use of natural gas.
I would be one of those screaming and yelling. So, thank you very much. Okay, then, we're ready. We have two motions we are asked to approve, one to adopt the negative declaration, and one to approve the resolution for the plan.
Can we do that in one motion? Are we allowed to?
Adam?
Yes, you may.
So moved.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Siri. Call the rule, please.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes, thank you very much. Motion carries. So moving on to 11.3, the longest motion, the longest agenda title that we've ever had, we'll ask Stacy.
Can I move to dispense with the reading of the actual item? And just move on, like, maybe say the first line?
I can read the first line, sure.
Great.
An ordinance adding Chapter 16.96 floodplain management ordinance and a series of additional titles.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from this item, because I live in the area that would be affected by this decision.
Of course. So, we're going to welcome Albert and Dahlia.
No, there's just a small portion of the city that is flood-able and has mandatory flood insurance. I live in that area.
Yep. Welcome.
Thank you. And good evening, Mayor Budge, and members of the council, Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department. And from time to time, we do update our code in order to stay current. We brought this item before city council two weeks ago. At that time, we heard public comment and received input from council. Subsequently, we have made some updates to the ordinance, and Dahlia is going to give us more information.
Thank you, Dahlia.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. We will go ahead and move forward with our presentation for tonight. So like Albert said, we did make some edits to multiple chapters in the municipal code. Most of the revisions were very minor, for clarity. We also made revisions to stay in line with the latest state and federal regulations. The titles that were updated with this submittal, or this proposed edits, include titles 3, 6, 10, 12, 15, 16. At the last city council meeting on August 7, we did talk in depth about the proposed revisions to titles 3, 6, 10, 12, 15, and 16, and we did not receive any comments or questions regarding those edits. So the focus of today's presentation will be on the new proposed chapter, which is Chapter 1696 for floodplain management ordinance. In general, at a high level, floodplain management ordinance is a set of regulations and guidelines implemented to mitigate impacts of flooding. And we do so by requiring mitigation measures and conditioning projects that are located in floodplain areas to protect public safety and reduce damage during flood events. The city of Rancher Cordova currently implements the Sac County Floodplain Management Ordinance. However, in a recent audit that was conducted by the California Department of Water Resources, as well as FEMA representatives, it was required that the city adopt our own standards moving forward, and that will allow us to continue participation in the National Flood Insurance Chapter 1696 will replace the city's reliance on city code. It will also allow us to stay in compliance with the latest FEMA and DWR requirements. It does use the latest template language from the Department of Water Resources as required by FEMA. It does not significantly change any city's processes in regulating floodplains from what we do currently. And then finally, the new ordinance shall be approved by the end of August. That's a regulatory deadline from FEMA. So adoption of this ordinance will meet General Plan Policy S 2.1.2, which basically requires the city to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program by updating floodplain ordinance as necessary to help reduce flood damage. The proposed floodplain management ordinance does not supersede any more restrictive general plan policy or any other restrictive regulations in general. There are consequences for not adopting our proposed new floodplain ordinance. Those include that residents that have property in floodplain areas will not be able to purchase flood insurance. Existing flood insurance policies will not be renewed. No federal grants or loans for development may be made in those areas. No federal disaster assistance to the local community, in this case, it would be the city. And then no federal mortgage insurance or loan guarantees will be provided for the properties within those areas. So in the last meeting, we received feedback and comments from our residents. We definitely appreciate all the feedback and comments that we received, and the time that people took to really review the ordinance and give us their feedback. Based on that feedback, we did perform additional analyses specifically for SEQA exemptions, and we did confirm that the proposed ordinance is exempt from SEQA per the following reasons. The first is that implementation of the ordinance would not differ substantially from implementation of the county ordinance as currently applied. So therefore, it would not have a significant effect on the environment. And there are two additional SEQA sections that apply to this exemption, which is 15307 and 15308. And the proposed ordinance will regulate development within the floodplain in order to promote public health, safety, and general welfare. The other clarifications and edits that we made were related to the Central Valley Flood Protection Board having jurisdiction over floodplain areas within the city. That comment is accurate. So we have added language to the ordinance to clarify that the city, FEMA, and the Central Valley Flood Protection Board have jurisdiction over projects along the American River Parkway, and that for proposed projects in that area, the most stringent floor elevation requirement applies. So basically, we would look at all three regulatory conditions and apply the most stringent to that development project. Finally, there was a comment about the authority for the floodplain administrator to waive submission of site plans and construction documents. So we did make the clarification that that would only be the case for super minor improvements that do not require submittal by an engineer or a land surveyor. Those include, for example, installation of a water heater, backyard awning, and other minor building improvements. When it is found that the nature of the proposed development is such that the review, such submissions, is not necessary. So basically, super minor. Those were all the changes that we made since our last meeting, and now we'll move on to the recommended action for tonight, and I'll turn it back to Albert.
Thank you very much, Dahlia. And we have received additional written public comment as recently as today, so we would appreciate the opportunity to perform additional analysis of that. And so our recommendation tonight is for council to consider hearing additional public comment, providing the input from city council, and city staff are available to answer any questions. And our recommendation for council's consideration would be to continue this item to a date uncertain.
Through the council, through the mayor, if I may.
Yeah, because that brings up a couple of important questions.
Sure. So this item is something that I think staff has worked really diligently on. Staff, also, going back a few slides, Dahlia, to the presentation, I do think it's worth emphasizing, you know, what happens if you don't go forward. And I think staff has, is trying to do something that is legally required in order to meet, to be able to get insurance for residents in the city. And we received a letter today that, again, challenges the process by which the city proposes to do this. And if we do what the letter says, we would need to take a long time in order to comply with essentially what the letter says. The letter seems to threaten the city with litigation if you, you know, proceed with the current set of exemptions. And if you don't, this is going to take a long time to reprocess. So I do think it's important for us to look closely at the letter. You know, Mr. Stricker made his recommendation to you after talking with me about the letter that's just come in. But, you know, I would emphasize to, as we have the conversations with the community, that staff is working hard to try to do something that they believe is legally required, they believe is consistent with the prior approach, and that's really to get the ability to provide flood insurance to these residents, and to do all of the other city works that come with the ability to get flood insurance. So I, you know, I don't, I'm hopeful that in additional conversations with the community, and perhaps with the community's attorneys about this, we can have a constructive conversation that will answer the remaining questions and bring this back to you, you know, ideally, and it may be overly optimistically, in a non-adversarial way. My hope is that we can engage in these conversations and reach some understanding about why this is a necessary and valuable step for the city to take.
Okay, but there's.
Albert, have I any other things to add to? But I do support the recommendation that, given what we've received, it would be good to take a look and make sure we've, you know, crossed all of our Ts and dotted all of our Is, and heard the community out.
But there's a very specific slide that said it has to be approved by the end of August.
Yep. Which this is saying it won't be approved till the 5th.
That's correct.
So how do we?
How are we complying with the end of August?
There is definitely some risk associated with that. There is the opportunity for us to reach out to California Department of Water Resources and FEMA, but that is certainly alternative risk that we would be facing.
Because I was going to ask, if you were going to bring it back on the 29th of August.
We have a meeting.
Yeah, because we do have that meeting, but.
I, for one, don't want to risk lapsing the insurance.
If you happen to be that unique individual whose flood insurance was being renewed between the 31st of August and the 5th of September, they wouldn't renew it.
Well, you've got a handful of different scenarios that would be really bad. What if somebody's trying to buy a house during that time?
Right.
And they're trying to secure insurance, and they're in escrow. They wouldn't be able to have it. If they're trying to renew during that period?
Yep.
They wouldn't have it. If their lender asks them to show proof of their insurance during that time, they wouldn't be able to produce it. So there's a whole, there's a whole bunch of bad things to this, and we do have a meeting on the calendar already because of the districting conversation, that we might as well put it there.
And quite, Donald is correct, having moved four times in the last five years.
Yeah.
It's one of those disclosure items that you've got to, that you've got to answer.
And I will say, we're speaking to the item before we've taken public comment, so we hopefully will be doing that soon. I'm just saying, from a process standpoint, like.
The process is important.
Without, under this scenario, flood insurance is not available for at least five days, if we're lucky. I would argue it's probably longer than that, because you'd pass it on this, we'd inform FEMA, not exactly the fastest-moving federal government.
For sure.
Department.
And they're busy right now.
And they're busy in this state, and to the west of us, about 3,000 miles, dealing with other things. So I get those are two different departments, but it's something to think about.
So we've certainly taken the comments seriously. We have improved our explanation of the applicability of the SEQA exemptions considerably. I would add for the record that I do think that the, there, regarding the argument that a couple of the exemptions don't apply, the ordinance does not reduce the protection for flood, for the floodplain, because it doesn't, because it does not allow the issuance of more permits within the floodplain. So I do think that, you know, there are some arguments that we could help further explain, and some comments that have been received today that I think, you know, with additional outreach, might be clarified. I appreciate, again, you know, Mr. Stricker's willingness to continue, and the team's willingness to continue to try to do outreach with and talk with these communities. But, you know, again, it appears that we're being threatened with litigation if we do something that it appears the council really needs to do.
So why don't you just change the date? The September 5th?
Linda, maybe before we give direction to staff, we should take public comment?
No, but it's a question, all right? So you could consider changing the date, and then if we needed to continue it on that date, then we could do that.
Would that be fine?
Totally fine with that.
I am, too.
Garrett, Siri, do you all have any questions?
Not at this time.
Garrett? Garrett?
I don't have any questions.
No questions? Okay, so my only other question, Albert, who is the floodplain administrator?
Technically, it is me or the public works director's designee.
Okay, all right.
So Dahlia is certainly the expert here, so in act, probably Dahlia would be performing most of the duties through her exceptional expertise.
Okay, great. All right. We have public comment?
Yes, we do. Can we open the public hearing?
Sure.
Although this is just a regular calendar item.
It's.
No, it's not, sorry.
That's okay.
Never mind. That was the last page.
Okay. Open the public hearing.
Brenda Augustin. Following Brenda Augustin will be Mark Berry. And then I will go to Zoom and telephone, and then I will go to, and read off the names.
Okay.
Be a email.
Welcome, Brenda.
Thank you. Good evening. I appreciate that the proposed ordinance includes the Central Valley Flood Protection Agency as having jurisdiction over projects along the American River Parkway, along with the city and FEMA. It's also good that Section 2 findings under SEQA compliance state that the proposed ordinance regulates development within the floodplain in order to promote public health, safety, and general welfare in connection, conjunction with maintenance, preservation, and restoration of floodplains for local creeks and the American River. Yet I do not understand why in Section 1 recitals, jurisdiction is stated to be for projects along the American River Parkway rather than along the American River. The Parkway, the American River, and the floodplain are distinctly different and governed relative to their distinction. Perhaps Section 1 is an error, and if so, needs to be corrected. If intentional, it seems inaccurate. Also, the city of Rancher Cordova does not specifically cite the Central Valley Flood Protection Board's. Protection Board's CCR Title 23 Waters. I request this specific regulation be stated so that the board's expertise and authority is adhered to at the very beginning of a proposed project in consideration by the Rancho Cordova Planning Department, Planning Commission, and City Council. The Central Valley Flood Protection Board thoroughly investigates and updates their codes to protect the health and welfare of residents in the Central Valley from the dangers of flooding, which, as you know, are on the rise and expected to increase in coming years. They have determined it necessary and have been mandated to keep designated floodways, floodplains open and expand them throughout their jurisdiction due to the changes forthcoming as they vigorously prepare California for flooding. Their considerations for modernization detail the vast knowledge and experience from the mistakes of building in floodways that has caused, from the mistakes building in floodways has caused, and the public benefit received when use is optimized while sustaining availability to prevent flooding when water levels rise. Flood protection is a crucial life, health, and safety issue in our area, as evidenced during many flood events and most recently this year. These events are expected to increase in the coming years, and agencies such as the Central Valley Flood Protection Board are authorities whose focus is to keep citizens safe. It seems prudent and wise to allow their codes to be included in this new ordinance so the very best authorities with data based on historical precedent and updated climate predictions will provide safe development in our area, since what we do along the wild and scenic American River affects Sacramento County citizens along the American River and its Parkway.
Please wrap up your comments.
Increasing collaborations with global thinking and acting locally is imperative. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Mark?
Mark Berry with Tiffany Farms Homeowners Association. Basically, I just have two comments and one thank you for including the Central Valley Flood Protection Board in the, in the statute revision. Like Brenda pointed out, I was kind of curious and wanted to make sure, you know, in the public record that what was meant about the American River Parkway versus the American River, and, and so I don't know whether we can clarify that now at this meeting, but I wasn't sure, because the, the boundaries of the special flood hazard zones and the designated floodway are both, exceed the American River Parkway boundary. So I wasn't sure what was intended there, so that could perhaps be clarified. And the other was just a comment about sort of the preamble in the, leading to the ordinance about the added spillway to Folsom Dam significantly reduces high flows on the American River, and that the Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency submitted revised modeling to FEMA requesting the adjustments of the base flood elevation to account for changes in the operation of Folsom Dam. Then that once approved, the revised FEMA maps will show reduction in the base flood elevation for floodplain areas. Now, there's, you know, been, been no public hearing on that, so we really don't know if that's approved. But also, in reviewing the Folsom Dam Modification Water Control Manual Update, January 2019, put out by the Army Corps of Engineers, Department Bureau of Reclamation, SAFCA, and Central Valley Flood Control Board, the manual is updated to establish the operational changes in, in the flood management system based upon the Reclamation District, Central Valley Flood Protection Board, Department of Water Resources, and SAFCA. And it's to set, operational rules were developed for a minimum, the following primary dam safety flood risk management objectives. And one of them is control annual, one in 100 chance or the 100-year flood, and the normal release of 115,000 CFS as a criteria set by SAFCA. Well, currently, you know, when I built my house in the floodway, the 115,000 CFS was the base flood elevation, so, or was the release that established the base flood elevation. So it seems to me that it, you know, might be a bit of an overstatement in the preamble to the ordinance here, that the, the elevation of the base flood is going to change. What's really happened at Folsom Dam was they lowered the spillway so there'd be releases, releases earlier. It didn't necessarily change the base flood elevation from, from my understanding. So perhaps that could be clarified a bit, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
I'm now going to go to Zoom. James Garcia, your hand is raised, and I've unmuted you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Welcome, James.
Hi, I'm James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. I just want to make sure that with this ordinance, that we are upholding the requirement not to build in the floodways properly, and that the city needs to talk to other neighbors upstream and downstream as that changes the river dramatically. As we develop near the river, it changes the ecosystem. We need to not work in a bubble, because again, if we destroy the ecosystem in our area, it will ultimately cause the ecosystem to change. The steelhead trout that are there, our salmon population, all of the other wildlife that's along the American River. And the American River isn't just a Parkway, it's an American River. There's American River Parkway sections all within the city, so we need to make sure that this applies to the whole entire area, not just one designated section. I'm again happy that you're adding the Central Valley Flood Protection Board, and again, they're designed to help protect us by not building in the floodways. No, don't change the makeup of the river by trying to fill in areas with dirt from one area, because again, it changes the whole entire makeup if you do such a thing. And again, continue to follow our well-established public easements by not building in those floodways that are out there. So that's, that's along the whole entire river. Don't want to have that happen. So I hope that you're addressing all of that type of information. And again, as Mark Berry mentioned, please clarify the different boundaries before implementing an ordinance of this type, because it affects everyone along the whole American River, both sides of the river, not just within our city. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
There's no additional public comment via Zoom or telephone. The city did receive a few emails from members of the public. Those have been distributed to the city council. They have been placed on the city's website, and they are printed for the public in the back of the council chambers. Those came from seven individuals: Donald Mooney, Angel Ball, Kathy Birch, Charles and Marilyn Alver, Lisa Phoenix, Brenda Augustin, Mark Berry.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll close the public hearing. Any additional questions for staff?
I would just make the comment that I, I know that there are members of the public that would like to see us continue to refine this policy. Taking action to adopt it now doesn't mean that we still can't do that at a later date, but we do have a deadline that if not adopted, could affect members of people that just had to recuse themselves, and members of people that are sitting in, in chairs in this room at the moment. And so we need to act. I would say we should act before the deadline as well and ensure that nobody has, has an issue in accessing flood insurance. Somebody who works for a bank and has worked for banks that do mortgages, the bank I work at at the moment doesn't, there's a huge risk, I mean, just, just one person being affected by this, of not being able to close on a home, or not being able to refinance, or not be able to get a home equity loan, or a whole myriad of things that could happen. The fact that we're this close to it, I'm a little disappointed, but I know it, it came up in an audit, we were told that we needed to do it in a certain amount of time, and then FEMA said this is the deadline to do it. It is what it is. We, we have no choice but to act. But if there are additional enhancements that we can do three months, six months, nine months, 12 months from now, then we should do that, that's fine. So don't, don't think that because we're doing something tonight, that that's the only opportunity that you had to weigh in on this. And so, yeah, whenever we need, I'm happy to make a motion.
Yeah. Given the fact that this is, is a two-step process, because tonight is simply waiving the first reading, and then we need a date to continue it to. And it just seems only prudent to continue it to our next meeting.
Yeah.
And then if we need to do something at that next meeting, whatever it is, then we have the option to do that.
So can I ask the city attorney a quick question about that? Are we allowed to adopt this at a special meeting? Because that's what that would be.
Yeah, we're allowed to introduce it at a special meeting, but not adopt it at a special meeting. So, so we would be coming back at the regular meeting for, in, in both scenarios, if you continue to the special meeting, or if you introduce tonight, you would be coming back for adoption at the first meeting in September.
So we have no ability to meet the deadline?
We're going to, the, the adoption would be, if they, yeah, the adoption would be at the second, at the first meeting in September, on September 5th, I believe.
So we can't pass this as an urgent, urgency ordinance next time or something? I really don't like the fact that we're not going to meet this deadline.
If I may add, just, just one clarifying item, as I was thinking about the, the schedule moving forward, we are required to, to do a public notice for this, and so if we're continuing to the 29th, I believe that may not be enough time for us to do our normal public, public noticing that we do through the paper.
Unless you kept the public hearing open, but I, I think, yeah, I'm, you know, I'm prepared to say if the, if the council is, is, is prepared to move forward tonight, I think we certainly are. We have, you know, we have improved the, the SEQA findings. We have, you know, it is, again, it's, it's interesting that we continue to get essentially a threat of litigation if we do something that appears to be both required and valuable to, valuable to many people who would be interested in this. So we hope we're not in a position of defending-
If I, if I'd known at the last meeting that we couldn't meet the deadline, I wouldn't have continued it the last time. I would have moved it then. So I'm fairly disappointed in the fact that we're here and we can't, that we're going to be at least five days late. And I guess as part of my motion, then, and I'll go ahead and make it, is to, to waive the ordinance, or waive the reading and direct staff to find whatever means possible that legally we can adopt this before the deadline.
And so the motion would be to waive, waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance.
Yeah.
And for staff to find every feasible option to adopt this at our next-
And continue it to the 29th.
And, and adopt the identified SEQA exemptions.
Yeah. And continue it to the 29th.
Yeah. Got all that? Anybody want to second me?
Okay.
Again, I, I think we're not going to, we're not, yeah, I, I don't think we're going to be able to-
You're not to figure it out tonight, but by tomorrow or the day after, if there's a way to do it, let's do it on the 29th.
If we can, if we can do it, we will add it on the 29th, but we-
Okay. I mean, I, I'll be frank, I would have done an emergency meeting to pass this anyways. The fact that we have a special meeting planned, if we can do that, let's do that. If it needs to be an emergency meeting, fine, I'll show up for that, but like-
Can you, can, just for the record, are you able to give us any more information about the actual impact if, if the second reading occurs on September 5th versus before? Are you able to share any more information about that?
There, there certainly is some risk, but absolutely, we can reach out to Department of Water Resources and FEMA and, and request an extension.
Let's do that, too.
Because the ordinance would have been introduced.
Like I said, I would never have continued it at the last meeting, regardless of the public's comment. The, the out, the, the impact of not adopting this is far too great to say, we're going to continue to refine this and add more language to the flood, to any of these things, to risk somebody losing flood insurance or not having access to it. It's too important.
Okay. Are you going to second it, or did you?
I'm really confused at this point, given the fact that this, this is being done for the public safety and to reduce, you know, damage during flood events, and FEMA's pushing us on doing this, and they're the ones with the deadline. So I, I support the motion, but if we can get that extension, then what happens then? Do we then meet on September 5th? Is that what the plan is?
We're going to meet on the September 5th anyways. We're also going to meet on, on August 29th.
Right.
What Adam just said is, we may not be allowed to adopt an ordinance like this at a special meeting. We can only do it at a regular meeting, which the next one wouldn't be till September 5th.
Right. So what are we going to do on 29th if we cannot adopt on the 29th?
We have to do it on the 5th.
So I second your motion.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Are we keeping the public hearing open or closed?
And if, if we keep the public hearing open, then if you're able to get that extension from FEMA, you can simply provide that update on, at, on the 29th.
Does that have to be in a hearing, or can it just be an action item?
If we have a noticing problem if you don't keep the public hearing open.
Okay, then we'll reopen the public hearing.
And then continue.
And add that to Donald's motion.
Agreed.
And continue it to the 29th of August. Call the roll.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yes, yes.
Vice Mayor Sander has recused himself. Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you very much. David, you can return.
Councilmembers, Michelle Mingay, Finance Department.
Um, Michelle, we need Stacy to read the title of the, uh, agenda item first, sorry.
A resolution authorizing the issuance of special tax bonds for and on behalf of the City of Rancho Cordova Arista del Sol Community Facilities District, number 2022-1, improvement area number one, approving and directing the execution of a fiscal agent agreement, approving the form of a preliminary official statement, approving the sale of such bonds, and approving other related documents and actions.
Okay, Michelle, welcome.
All right, let's try this again. Michelle Mingay, City Finance Department. The item that is before you this evening is an item to authorize the issuance of special tax bonds on and behalf of the Arista del Sol Project Community Facilities District 2002-1. This Community Facilities District was formed in 2022 for the Arista del Sol Project with the intent of funding facilities and impact fees for the development boundaries. The financing resolution before you this evening authorizes the sale of bonds in an amount not to exceed $17.5 million, which will be used to fund the facilities within that district's boundaries. The special tax bonds are issued by the Community Facilities District and are secured solely by special taxes collected within the CFD boundaries and is not a debt of the city's general fund. And with that, I will open it up for any council, or any questions that the council may have.
Questions? Stacy, is there any public comment?
The city clerk's office does not have any public speaker cards, and I do not see any hands that are raised in Zoom or by telephone for this item.
Okay.
Move the item.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Sander.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, we're at council request for future agenda items.
Recording in progress.
I do have a pack, sort of a, a package of ideas that I don't know if we've actually discussed here before.
Are we still recording?
We are still recording, yes.
Okay. Great.
Yeah, I'm interested in the impacts of trucks and industrial uses on residents. So the automation of sound monitoring, for example, how do we monitor hours of operation where we have agreements in place? How do we be sure the appropriate trucks are using the appropriate routes? How do we monitor air quality? How do we appropriately- How do we appropriately protect our infrastructure, including roads, et cetera? And how do we monitor use of trucks on approved routes? There probably is some technology that can be applied here, but someone on staff is going to have to look at what legal options are available, what technology might be available. And I think sooner rather than later is a good time to discuss that.
Okay, so we assume everybody agrees? And I have one very lighthearted idea. We've been asked to consider having a city flower. So I thought we could have a short discussion on how to go about establishing a city flower.
Wow, that's an interesting idea.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
We don't.
No, we don't.
Or a tree. I tried a tree once, that was shot down though.
Yeah, Garrett will come with his palm trees. He's leading forward too.
Yeah, right.
If we're going to go down that path, is it worth kind of-
Yeah.
You're saying it's a small discussion, but I just wonder, is this along the same lines as like, I'm not volunteering for this? But a small subcommittee to work on things like this that we would want to choose?
You know, I don't think so because the only thing that's been suggested to me is that maybe we ask for people's nominations for a city flower so we could simply decide flower, bird, tree, whatever.
Well, and maybe there's a calendar that we do this once a year for-
Oh, is it once a year flower?
No, no, no. Flower this year.
Flower of the year.
It's reptile next year. It's bird of the year after.
No, let's leave that reptile. I think it's a great idea for the youth. They come up with a flower and why they choose that flower.
Reptile.
Absolutely.
No, please. Okay, I have one, Mayor.
Yes.
So I'd like to have an update on the fiber networks, on the status they're having with the city. I know they were supposed to be done by Feb. 2024 and I know in South of Sunrise, there've been so many issues.
I think we should be very careful about three of us maybe having to recuse ourselves and if we're specific part of that-
I'm asking for an update overall for the city.
Right, so the reference you're about to give, I don't think you really should do that.
Like I said, I'd like an update for the process that they're happening in the city.
That sounds like a lovely idea. Okay, great. All right. We're going to adjourn to closed session. We'll be back for a report out of closed session. Stacy, if you would read the title of the closed session.
The title of the closed session is Public Employee Performance Evaluation, City Manager Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957B1.
Great, thank you very much.
Recording stopped.